Everyone, we're going to call the regular meeting to order this Monday, May 15. If you would mind, rise with me for a silent invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Please be seated. Okay, we have some recognitions and some proclamations to give out here. All right. First proclamation is going to Michael Graymont. If Michael, we can have you come forward. We'd like to recognize him this evening. He's been involved in the Aquatic Center. You're probably quite familiar with Michael Graymont. Let me read this to you here. Morgan Hill City Council recognizes Michael Graymont for his decades of work serving the Morgan Hill community. In his efforts to support swimming as a parent, volunteer, meet director, and regional swimming official, Michael has helped to shape Morgan Hill Swimming and brought thousands of swimmers to the Morgan Hill Aquatic Center. Michael's efforts have helped to transform the lives of thousands of youth participating in swimming in our community and made the Morgan Hill Aquatic Center what it is today. Michael is retiring from his volunteer work. You can't retire from volunteer work. Maybe no one's ever told you that. While Michael's retiring from his volunteer work at the Aquatic Center, his legacy of giving to swim community will be remembered for years to come. Michael, thank you so much. Also got a plaque. I think somebody has a plaque we'd also like to present you with, and then we're gonna let you say a few words.
I didn't expect to say anything, so this will be off the cuff. It started with swimming when the Morgan Hill Aquatic Center opened up. It was at 2004, right around there. My kids went through it. I had four children that swam through it. One actually made it to the Def Olympics, swam for the United States, both in Prussil and Turkey, and held the women's 1500 meter record for almost 12 years until it was just recently beat. I've always said, and I've always said this, and it backed it up, Morgan Hill has the fastest pool on the West Coast water-wise. We have the records to prove it. It was actually an honor and a privilege working with Chris, now Molly, all the other people that was there. They have a wonderful team that works both with the rec facility folks as well as the competition, and I look forward to seeing it thrive under new people. I'm you say you never voluntary retire? Well, I'm involuntarily retiring unfortunately. But there's a couple of really great competitions that'll be coming up this spring, like in two weeks, and then this summer with our Westerns. And I know the facility will shine like it always does, and the people that work there will make it go off without a hitch, and it's a beautiful facility. It's one of the actual little gems in the whole Bay Area as far as a public-run facility. There is nothing else like it. And I know it will be for many more years to come, especially under the wonderful leadership of Molly over there, and then Chris helping and Jenny and everybody else. So, um, thank you very much. This is very humbling and very deeply appreciated, and I look, I look forward to being around for a while yet. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Appreciate it. Proclamation is for, I think we're gonna have Chief Pausgrove come forward for this one. This is proclaiming May 15, 2024 as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week of May 12 through the 19th, 2024, as National Police Week. Across our nation, law enforcement officers carry the great responsibility of protecting their fellow citizens. Our Peace Officers Memorial Day and during National Police Week, we honor these public servants who fight crime, violence, and terrorism, and pay the homage to the heroes who have fallen in the line of duty. As we observe Peace Officers Memorial Day and National Police Week, we pause to pay tribute to those who serve in law enforcement. On this occasion, we especially remember those who have made the ultimate sacrifice, and we pray for the families and friends of those they've left behind. We thank all the extraordinary American men and women who have answered the call to serve the law enforcement for their commitment to justice and to their communities. A joint resolution approved October 1, 1962, the President has been authorized and requested to designate May 15 of each year as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as National Police Week, and to direct the flag to be flown at half-staff on Peace Officers Memorial Day. Chief, thank you and your team for all that you do to keep our community safe. Here's a proclamation. We appreciate that. Like to say a few words.
If you said a council, thank you, community, for your continued support. And thank you for, on behalf of all the officers that have made the ultimate sacrifice, protecting their community, and those who still go out there on the streets and risk their lives day to day to protect us. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, chief. Another group who protect us. This is the National Public Works Week. Uh, this is May 19 through the 25th, and so I've got, if I would, I'd like to call up some of our teammates here from the Utilities, Maintenance, and Engineering Division of our Public Services Department, including Richard Guzman, Grant Murdock, Richard Wake, James Sylvan, Jose Rios, Yat Cho, Maria Angeles, Merlin Ugaldi, and Chris Gioni. Says Public Works Professionals focus on infrastructure facilities and services that are not that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Morgan Hill. These infrastructure, facilities, and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of public work professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential to their citizens. The year 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association. Do it now. Uh, thank you, uh, all of you for what you do and helping to serve our community and the fine work that you do. Thank you so much. Who are going to receive the, and the spokesperson? Is that going to be? Here you go. Thank you so very much.
There goes some more of the flowers. Thank you. Um, we are happy to represent the whole team. There's many, many of us, but um, we're glad to be here. Thank you.
Outstanding. Thank you so much. Thank all of you. This one is for the proclaiming the month of 2024 as Affordable Housing Month. Uh, this will be received by Allison. Is it Singalani? I'll take close. How do you pronounce it?
Singalani.
Singalani. Okay, very good. During the entire month of May, our region's housing partners host dozens of virtual workshops and webinars to inform the region and community about the region's housing challenges and solutions. Each year, thousands of Silicon Valley families struggle to find an affordable home in one of the most expensive housing markets in the nation. Affordable housing is a regional need that requires regional solutions and participation from all cities in the county. The city of Morgan Hill is committed to safe, stable, and affordable housing for all its residents. Strength Morgan Hills communities, uh, the strength of Morgan Hills community and economy depends on providing access to housing options that allow current and future residents of all income levels to live where they work. And so Allison, here you go. Would like to present that to you, and if you'd like to say a few words.
Thank you so much for letting me be here with you tonight and to be a part of your Affordable Housing Month. Um, I want to take a moment to recognize the city of Morgan Hill, which has really been a leader in the past planning cycle. You have not only met but exceeded um, all of your arena obligations, um, and that really speaks to the leadership of you, uh, mayor, of the vice mayor, and the council, as well as your city staff. Um, that's a, that's a hard feat to accomplish, and Morgan Hill has been one of the few cities in the county to do that. So we really look forward to your leadership continuing. Thank you. Um, we know that there's still a lot of need in the community. Uh, half of the renter households in Morgan Hill are cost-burdened. Twenty percent of the renter households pay more than half of their income each month in rent. Uh, so we know that one of the biggest barriers to building the affordable housing that we need uh, is the resources to do that. So SV at Home is excited to be part of a regional housing bond that's going to be on your ballot in November. Uh, that can bring resources to Morgan Hill and South County to build workforce housing, make sure your kids can stay here in the community when they, where they've, they've grown up. Um, so thank you very much. Uh, we're also, we'd also love to invite you to join us for Affordable Housing Month events. Uh, you can find those at siliconvalleyathome.org/events. We hope you'll join us. Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here. It is, it is true that it's the leadership that enables our ability to, to meet those arena numbers, and I, I think it's important to thank the previous councils who helped really make that happen in our last arena cycle. So thank you for noting that. This next one is proclaiming the month of 2024 as Foster Care Resource Parent Month, and Carol is, Carol, you're coming up for that one? I can come to you if it's easier. Okay, let's do that right here. Family serving the primary source of love, uh, let me start that again. The family. Serving as the primary source of love, identity, self-esteem, and support is the very foundation of our community. Educated resource parents give generously of themselves as they strive to provide children with safe, secure, and stable homes along with guidance, compassion, hope, and love. All children in foster care need a meaningful connection to a caring adult who becomes a trustworthy and lasting presence in their lives. Resource parents are called upon to support both children and their birth parents during efforts to safely reunite families whenever possible, yet commit to permanently, uh, to permanency whenever needed. Resource parents deserve the gratitude and respect for the work they do every day to ensure that our children can move beyond the trauma that they've experienced and prepare them for fulfilling productive lives. Carol, thank you so much, and here's the proclamation, and if you'd like to say a few words.
Okay, you wanna hang, hang on to that? My daughter will hold that. Okay, I first started fostering in San Juan Batista in San Bernardino County um, 60 years ago, April 1964. So April this year is 60 years. So I was going to retire in April, but I was persuaded by my social worker to stay a couple of more years because we have some children that need me. So, um, what should I say about foster care? I adopted seven of my 11 kids out of the foster care system. So I have 11 children, eight boys and three girls, who have all been very precious to me. I love my children. I always knew this was what I should do. My mother said, well, you love children, you know, become a teacher. So I went to college, made a teacher, taught for seven years, and then finally just fell out of it, and she kept saying, oh, no, you're gonna get a good retirement and all this and that. But never mattered to me. What mattered to me were the children that came into my house, and I loved all of them. Well, maybe not all of them, but I adopted them just so I could continue to love them.
And now, when your youngest is turning 12?
Oh, yeah, my youngest girl, Christiana, will be 30 this month, and my oldest one will be 70 on her next birthday. So I have 11 children in that 40-year period. But thank you all for coming out. Thank you all for this proclamation. Anybody that wants to become a foster parent, you know, it's a tough job, but you can do it. And um, there's plenty of them there. You can always find somebody that would love you for a family. So get down to the agency and fill out an application. It's not that hard.
408-99-kids.
Oh, yeah, okay, 408-299-kids, yeah.
Very good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, and thank you. Thank you for investing in other people's lives. Appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, one more. Proclaiming the month of May 2024 as wildfire awareness month. Carlos Alcantara is here to receive that. Where's Carlos? Thank you, Carlos. For the last five years, California has experienced seven of the deadliest wildfires, 12 of the largest wildfires, and 13 of the most destructive wildfires in state history. Over 5.5 million acres have burned more than 37,000 structures have been, and have destroyed tragically more than 160 lives have been lost. Firefighting alone cannot protect us, and every citizen, especially those living in fire-prone areas, has an important role in preventing a loss of life and property from wildfire events. This month, we should do all our, all, all should do our part to raise public awareness of the fire season that is already upon us and take steps to protect lives, homes, and families in the event of a wildfire. In conjunction with wildfire awareness month, the Morgan Hill Fire Department and CAL FIRE have intensified their continuing efforts to educate homeowners on the steps they should take to prepare themselves for wildfire. This potentially lifesaving information can be found at, on, on the web at emberware, E-M-B-A-R-W-A-R-E, emberware.com. Can I say a few words?
Sure. Um, uh, so I'll speak on behalf of our unit chief, Araca Carter. Um, and I want to say, um, I think I speak for him when I say that we're grateful that you guys continue to allow us to be your fire department. We, uh, we're thankful for the support, the constant support from all the equipment you guys give us building those new fire stations, and we're excited to continue the relationship with the city of Morgan Hill. Thank you.
Thank you. Here you go. Yep, that's still on. Thank you. Okay, we have a presentation from our Youth Action Council. We'll have them come forward.
Good evening, Mayor Turner, council members, city manager, city attorney, and all of our community members. Thank you all for being here today, and we are so excited to be back presenting to you all. Before we get into our presentation, we'd like to introduce ourselves. Hi, I'm DJ. This is my first year at Yak. I'm currently co-vice president, and I'm in ninth grade, and I go to GECA.
Um, hi, I'm Sandre. This is also my first.
Use the microphone there?
Uh, yeah. Um, hi, I'm Sandre. This is also my first year at Yak. I'm an active member, and I'm in ninth grade, also attending GECA.
And we are here to present this month's developmental asset, and that is asset number 18, youth programs. One person spends three or more hours per week in sports clubs or organizations outside of school and/or in community organizations. Um, this is important because it's beneficial to have new experiences.
Okay, so for this month's complimentary asset, we chose connect, which has introduced me to people who can help me grow, and we chose this asset because we thought it really stood by our stories.
Today, I'm gonna be sharing a story about facing challenges while also doing what you love. I'm part of an organization called Young Genius Speech and Debate Academy, and I've been a part of this institution for the past four years. Speech and debate has been a big part of my life ever since I was a little girl. Um, the main style of speech and debate that I do is called congressional debate. And I learned how to be a better debater by going to many different tournaments. And one thing that I did not realize was that high school tournaments would be a lot more difficult than middle school tournaments. For example, in my eighth grade year, I went to the Harvard Forensics Tournament, and I thought that I did a great job, and I was really confident because all my competitors and judges said that all my speeches and class examination was done really well. So I was feeling really confident in myself. So all of that changed when I went to high school, because my first tournament was in September, and writing 13 speeches didn't feel as easygoing as eighth grade because um, high school was a lot harder and I was a lot busier. And the day before the tournament, I felt like I was gonna pass out. I was so stressed out and so scared. But when I got there, I saw all the placards, all the other competitors, all the judges, and things just felt right, and I knew that I was meant to be there. Even though I did not break semifinals and I totally got obliterated at that tournament, I was still happy that I won and that I tried and that I kept trying, and I went to many more tournaments after that. And at the end of the day, results and winning aren't everything as long as you try your hardest.
Hey, thank you, DJ, for that story on how debate impacted your life, and I'd like to share a similar story, but for soccer. So as a member of Central Soccer Academy, I met my fair share of teammates, coaches, opponents, and even parents. And with my seasons at this club, they weren't always the best, and because of this, I've had my, I've had many different coaches. And these coaches, they always advised us to do the same things, which was show more effort, work harder, communicate better, communicate more. But then those messages never really stood with us. And for this reason, my teammate Andres, he brought his uncle Pedro to our practice one day, and Pedro, Pedro told us the same messages, but he's a player for Cabrillo Community College. And being not many years older than us, he was able to connect with us and sort of understand this. Um, he would always, he would advise us to work harder and communicate more, but he would huddle us up and tell it to us in a way that it stuck, stuck with us. He'd give us different examples on how, what would happen if we didn't do those, and what would happen if we did. And with his help and with his advice, we ended up clutching up and winning that season. And I learned a very valuable lesson, which was everybody has the answers within them, but it's how they express them and how they advise them which makes the difference. Um, I think we all have different extracurriculars that have impacted us. And I'd like to conclude this presentation with a quote from Colin Powell, which is, "There are no secrets to success. It is the result of the preparation, hard work, and learning from failure." Thank you for having us today. Good evening.
Thank you, Sandre. Thank you, DJ. Reports and up is council member.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, a couple updates. Uh, I, I'm currently the chair of the South County Regional Wastewater Authority. Uh, that's the authority that runs our sewer system down in Gilroy, and it's a joint effort that we have with our neighboring city of Gilroy. And I've been on that board for eight years, and it's been an amazing pleasure working with our colleagues down a little south of us, uh, and I'm very proud of the facility that continues to to win awards for the way the facility is run. So it is, is a great facility. Uh, and I'm glad I can support it together with my colleague, Ivan Martinez Beltran. We, uh, I'm also currently chairing the Governing Board of the Silicon Valley Habitat Agencies, and I'm a board member of its Implementation Board. And actually tomorrow afternoon here at 3 o'clock in this chamber, we'll have another Implementation Board meeting. Uh, I love being part of those boards as well. Uh, this is an authority that helps, helps us save thousands of acres of open space land here in our area. And uh, every time we meet, we learn about another hundred or a thousand or 2,000 acres being saved somewhere here in South County, uh, and many, many of the locations we're able to, to buy and save for eternity are from Coyote Valley to Morgan Hill, uh, outside of our city limits. Uh, one of the biggest highlights over the last few years was, uh, that we were able to save the land of the Tilton Ranch, uh, and that remains open space for eternity. Uh, so while I share the frustration with many of you that we're built too much, too fast, uh, let's also look at how much open space, uh, we've been able to save thanks to, uh, the Silicon Valley Habitat Agencies. And South County is a beneficiary of of, of that agency because this is where we still have the land that we can save. So, uh, very happy to serve that board. Uh, also, uh, you know, we go to many events, uh, so I learned to play Ibanka. I still can't play it, but it was for a good cause for the Silicon, uh, the South County Tailwaggers, uh, I supported Operation Freedom Pass with Pasta Feed. And, uh, just, uh, like three, four weeks ago, I, I joined, um, the DART Disaster Family Rescue Team exercise at the San Martin Airport that is run with uh, by the South County pilots and volunteers, and, and, and they do a tremendous job uh, helping out when there's, uh, help needed across the state. And, and, and it was such a, it was the only ugly day that we had in May, and it was raining so hard. It was so ugly, but I ended up being on the only flight that went up in the air, and, and thanks to an amazing pilot that couldn't see anything and had to trust his instruments, we actually made it to San Jose and back safely. So that was quite an experience. And, and I appreciate everything those pilots are doing, uh, in good and bad weather, and, uh, it took it a new appreciation for me, and, and they don't just do that, uh, once per year. They, they, uh, they all volunteer and do great jobs. They even out, even during the year, whenever they're needed. So thank you to all those pilots.
That's it. Thank you. Thank you, council member. Now move to the city manager's report. Christina?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the community, and my teammates that are here this evening, who is gonna help load up our presentation. So we're gonna start with our recognition um, of our new teammates as well as a recently retired teammate, and because, um, our retiree is here this evening, and he's retired, I want to get him home to his newly enjoyed evenings. And so um, tonight, we're gonna be recognizing Greg Deeny. So with that, Greg Deeny retired this February after serving as a Morgan Hill police officer for almost 20 years. He started his career with the city of Morgan Hill as a dispatcher, and in 2004, he was hired as a police officer. And over the years, his assignments have included field training officer, street crimes detective, bike team member, defensive tactics instructor, domestic violence detective, and most recently, our school resource officer. He's received numerous recognitions and rewards such as the Living Above the Influence Award, Beyond the Badge Award, for his commitment to serving our students, school staff, and teachers. Beyond the Badge Award, for his commitment to serving our students, school staff, and teachers, the Unsung Hero Award from Community Solutions, and the Victim Support Network of Santa Clara County for his work as a domestic violence detective and his direct support to victims of domestic violence. The last one I want to point out is his commendations from the Northern California Special Olympics for hosting and organizing the annual law enforcement torch run on Morgan Hill. And that just serves as one example of Greg's passion and love for everyone, especially our special needs community. Greg, you are already so missed and we appreciate your dedication and service to the city of Morgan Hill. Everyone, please join me in congratulating Greg on his retirement. Now, Mr. Deanie might have a few words for us.
Uh, just a couple of thank yous. Um, first of all, Christina, thank you for being um, just your genuineness and your kindness over the years has been greatly appreciated. Um, also, thank you for your support of the Morgan Hill Police Department. I know a few of you pretty well. Uh, Marilyn, Gino, um, Mayor, thank you. Um, but all of you, thank you for your support. Uh, Chief Pauls Grove, um, thank you for your, I've known Chief for a long time before he was chief. Um, thank you for your, your leadership and your guidance. Um, I, thank you. I love the beard, so keep the beard going. I can say that because I've known him a long time. Uh, my direct supervisor, but even um, better, my great friend Sergeant Scott Purvis, um, just one of the most respected um, guys in the police department. So, but an even better friend. So I'm trying to convince him to retire because it's really good to be retired. He's close. He's close. Sarah Tata, I knew uh, from our dispatch days back in the um, early two thousands. Now she's a big rig over there in the admin row. So, but Sarah, thank you for all your, your laughs and, and guidance over the years. So, thank you very much. And Michael, Michael, the best HR, I mean, the side of Santa Teresa, south of, no, in the county. Thank you. Thank you, Greg.
All right. Thank you, Greg. All right. So we're going to do our new hires. And if you're here this evening and you're able to make it, please come forward as I call your name. And thank you to the family members that are here joining your, um, your, your family member. So first, we have Christian Byram. And he joined our team as a full-time utility worker after working this past summer in the Utility Division part-time. Prior to joining our utilities team, he worked for M and L Precision Manufacturing, or excuse me, machining for a little over a year. Outside of work, he enjoys surfing and spending time with his friends and he's looking forward to meeting everyone. Next, we have Alberto Ortiz. Uh, he joined our utilities team as utility worker. He's coming to us from the San Jose Water Company where he was a maintenance worker too for five years. And he comes with a wealth of experience and certifications. On the weekends, he enjoys spending time with his boys, going to the parks, and barbecuing. And next, we have Gabrielle Haynes, uh, who joined our utilities team as the municipal service assistant. She has worked as a part-time clerical assistant uh, since two thousand and nineteen and very excited to start her full-time role. When she's not working, she loves being near the ocean where she takes time to relax. She also enjoys hiking and being outdoors and spending quality time with her husband and son. And next, we have Angel Ettraria, who's here this evening. So please come forward. She is uh, joining our city clerks team. So that makes Kim very happy. And Michelle Bigelow, uh, she's our municipal services assistant. She worked as a part-time teammate for the city in a few different capacities since two thousand and fourteen and spent the majority of her time assisting the preschool program before moving into a clerical role assisting recreation as well as finance. She's very excited to start her full-time role and continuing her growth uh, in our, in our organization. While she's not working, she enjoys spending time with her family and friends. And when she finds time, she enjoys traveling and trying new things. Next, we have Kathleen. First, let's, a round of applause for Angel. Next, we have Eliana Alvarada, who joined our environmental team as the Environmental Programs Coordinator. She has her master's degree in engineering management and leadership with Technical STEM in environmental and water resources engineering from Santa Clara University. Go Broncos. Uh, she's worked for EOA Inc. as a senior engineer scientist for about two years. And when she's not working, she enjoys hiking, reading, going to the movies, and having outdoor adventures with her six-year-old son, who I think I see over there in the audience. All right, uh, let's uh, welcome Eliana. And next, we have Nolan Ugaldi, who I believe is here. He came up earlier with our public services team. He joined our engineering division as an assistant engineer. And he's coming to us from the city of Melopetus where he worked as a junior engineer and an associate, excuse me, assistant engineer for the past two years. He received his bachelor's in civil engineering and music in two thousand and twenty from San Jose State University. Go Spartans. And in his free time, he likes to be active, such as going on hikes and going to the gym. He also really enjoys music. And on occasion, he'll get together with friends to play the guitar and piano. He also tries to make it to live shows and musical plays. Let's welcome Nolan. Let's have Fuqwin, who joined our engineering division as a junior engineer. Uh, he worked part-time as an engineering tech with us and that's been since two thousand and twenty-two. And he received his bachelor's degree in civil engineering in two thousand and nineteen and his master's in transportation hydrology in two thousand and twenty-one. In his free time, he enjoys tinkering with electronics and traveling. All right. On behalf of the city, our council, and the community, welcome to Morgan Hill. Let's give them all another round of applause. And uh, yesterday, as a matter of fact, they all received their oath of office. And so next, what I have is a promotion for Richard Guzman, who I believe is in the audience. And we're really excited to welcome a very long-term, long-time employee, Richard Guzman. He's been with us since October of two thousand. He previously held the position of utility worker two and was promoted to utility worker three in February of two thousand and twenty-four. Let's welcome and, and get excited about the promotion of Richard Guzman. All right, that concludes our teammate recognitions. Um, now I have several other announcements for the council and the community. Um, and so the first one, this is going to be a surprise to our very own Kim Nensera. I'm really excited to announce that she embarked on an incredible journey dedicating herself to the pursuit of excellence in municipal. Tonight, I'm honored to announce and celebrate her remarkable achievement, and that is earning the esteemed Certified Municipal Clerk CMC designation. Kim's journey towards earning her CMC is a result of her unwavering dedication, resilience, and passion for serving her community and city team. Throughout this journey, Kim embraced every opportunity for learning and development. And through her diligence and determination, she gained the essential knowledge and skills demanded of a municipal clerk. Today, as Kim stands proudly as a CMC, we celebrate not only her accomplishment, but her countless hours of hard work, sacrifice, and dedication that have brought her to this momentous achievement. Congratulations, Kim, on this well-deserved achievement. Your dedication and perseverance have set a shining example for us all. Here's to many more successes in your future endeavors. Let's congratulate. All right. Uh, today, we had the honor of recognizing a few of our own teammates at the Blue and Gold Recognition uh, Awards Luncheon that is hosted by the Exchange Club and was emceed by our very own mayor. Uh, for the police department, uh, the two individuals that were recognized are Ryan Warren and Adrian Sapien. And they were recognized for their excellent work in their homicide investigations that led to several arrests. They were tirelessly during the operational phase where they wrote search warrants, reviewed hours of audio content, coordinated surveillance operational activities with allied agencies, and completed the required affidavits leading to justice for the families. And Chief Pauls Grove was there today to recognize those two individuals. In addition, from Cal Fire, Monica Travens was recognized for her heroic lifesaving work in response to a major road accident. So congratulations to those teammates. Um, next, I wanted to uh, make a couple of updates on our commission, um, commission updates. And so originally, Tanaya Rose had been appointed to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Well, we had uh, John Moniz, who had been serving in that capacity, who wanted to continue in his role. And so John Moniz has been appointed to the Parks and Recreation Commission. And Tanaya Rose has been appointed to the Library Cultural and Arts Commission, so it is basically moving from one commission to the, to the next. And she's excited to serve in that capacity. And so thank you to both of those individuals for volunteering to serve on these important advisory committees. Also wanted to announce that Mike, uh, that this uh, May is Bike Month. And we do have Bike To Wherever Day tomorrow uh, from two to four. Uh, the city will be hosting an Energizer Station. Um, so be sure to look out for that located next to the Centennial Recreation Center by West Little Yoggus Creek Trail. And so plan your route and stop by for some fun giveaways. Uh, let's see, two more announcements. Um, I wanted to announce that this weekend is the Family Health and Wellness Resource Fair. That's from ten to two. That's at the Community and Culture Center. A lot of great resources. And then I wanted to announce our uh, Public Works event. And so our Public Works crew, as you heard and saw this evening, works tirelessly and uh, really exciting. They're going to showcase um, their work and all the things that you don't get to see because a lot of it is underground and get to see the equipment they use. And so that's going to be on Wednesday, May twenty-second from nine to eleven. And I do have one more, and this is related to our Panthers. And so our Panthers uh, continue to play their home games at the SAP Center. Uh, they started, uh, well, they're going to have a next, their next game on May twenty-fifth against the San Antonio Gunslingers at six oh five. And then again, on June eighth against Tucson. And so um, just wanted to let everybody know, check out our Panthers. It's a super fun time at the SAP uh, center and uh, bring your family. And with that, I conclude my report.
Good. Thank you, Christine. Uh, City Manager, new report, Don. Yes, City Attorney. He's got a raise. Yeah, yeah. You got a promotion. So.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, the count, uh, prior to this regular meeting, council met in closed session on two items. The first was um, the city of Morgan Hill versus Rocky and Glenda Garcia at all, and there was no reportable action. The second um, was a conference with legal counsel regarding um, a claim by Ten South Acquisitions LLC. And in that closed session, uh, council gave authority to enter into a settlement agreement. Under the terms of the agreement, the city would um, not raise legal obstacles to um, Ten South Acquisitions project. And in exchange, it's a twenty-five-nine unit housing project. In exchange, um, Ten South Acquisitions would agree to maintain at least twenty percent of the total units um, as very low, um, so very low-income housing and provide a two million dollar contribution towards city infrastructure, among other things.
Very good. Thank you, City Manager. City Attorney, Don, thank you for that. Any other reports? Uh, Councilmember uh, Leon Delton. Martinez Beltran.
Martinez, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Um, well, I, I wanted to give, I have a couple of different reports. I'll start with what's upcoming. Upcoming this Saturday on the eighteenth will be the Children's Art Exhibit, Expressions About Palestine Through Local Children's Art. That'll be happening at the Peace Monument right out here from twelve to four. It's, you can find more information at tiny URL slash art for Pal. Or Pally, excuse me. And at five twenty-two, I am on the Peninsula Division Executive Board for the League of Cities. And we are having a November ballot measures panel. So we'll be talking about um, different ballot measures. A CA thirteen, we'll be talking about the new BAFSA um, housing bond. And we will also be talking about um, having different perspectives on um, anything that, some, some issues that labor is looking at and what they feel is important to be looking at with a ballot measure. So we will be hearing from them and having question and answer after. So I would encourage all of my colleagues to come to that. It'll be from eleven thirty to one at Cisco. Um, and that's on the twenty-second, which is a Wednesday. And then I wanted to report on four seventeen. I was at Legislative, the Legislative Action Day by the League of Cities. I attended for two days. I attended on the Wednesday and Thursday, one for the Latino Caucus. I actually got to meet with Speaker Robert Rivas, which was great. Um, I also got to meet with the next day for the Peninsula Division with uh, Senator Weiner and got to tell him about high transit corridor and that we would like to have that redefined because we actually are labeled as high transit corridor, but we do not have high transit. So that was a great meeting. I had an A-BAG meeting where we voted, it was a historic vote, to approve possible ten to twenty billion dollar housing bond that will come, be coming to the Bay Area um, looking at by BAFSA, the Bay Area Financing Housing Authority. I also, um, on the thirtieth, I wanted to mention the Morgan Hill Education Foundation had their ribbon cutting um, to support our kids. That was great. I wanted to thank our teachers for Teachers Appreciation Month. On the ninth, I chaired the VTA PAC um, committee. We approved a four point two million dollars for the SR eighty-five corridor program category project. And we also uh, had an update on Valley Transit Plan two thousand and fifty, where I asked that we create, continue to prioritize by not just our local, localities, but by valley, VTA, um, HOV lanes, that we also prioritize at the VTA level, that we continue to get support to bring more transit and cross-city transit, as we're currently defined again as a high transit, yet lack the high transit. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Just mentioned real quickly that uh, the Mushroom Festival is taking place on May twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. So now, on to public comment. This opportunity for public comment is for items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to make a comment on an item that is on the agenda, please wait until we get to that item to offer your comments. Members of the public are entitled to address the city council concerning any item within the Morgan Hill City Council's subject matter jurisdiction. Public comments are limited to no more than three minutes. Except for certain specific exceptions, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. Public comment is uh, intended for comments. Questions posed during the public comment are not generally answered. If you have questions, please send them to thecityclerk@ccpubliccomment@morganhill.ca.gov to receive a response. Do we have any uh, public comments?
Yes, Krista Rep.
Is this on? Okay, it's on. Um, good evening, Mayor, council members, city teammates, and community. I'm Krista Rep, Executive Director of Visit Morgan Hill. It's wonderful to see you on this May evening. And May is also California Tourism Month. Visit California has released its annual Economic Impact of Tourism Report. That report states that in two thousand and twenty-three, the state has fully recovered in tourism spending, surpassing pre-pandemic figures. In Santa Clara County, we had nearly seven billion dollars in tourism spending in two thousand and twenty-three. And this is an eleven point seven percent increase year over year. Also this month, we are releasing our own report as Visit Morgan Hill. This is our first-ever tourism market assessment. I'm very excited to announce that it is hot off the press as of today. And um, this is an achievement that we are very proud of at Visit Morgan Hill. Um, this is a high-level analysis of the local tourism market using local, regional, and state data. Compared to where we were five years ago, we are legitimately tracking tourism where we were only taking guesses before. We finally have enough data in normal, non-pandemic years uh, that we can measure apples to apples over time. This also helps us plan for the future and shows that we are not alone in our slow recovery after the pandemic and um, this, the slower growth ahead. The region and state forecast confirms that what we have and are uh, seeing at the local level. The takeaways from the report also inform our strategy and let us know uh, that we are on the right track. Visit Morgan Hill's job is to attract visitors to our city, and we need to set ourselves apart now more than ever. The report shows that we need to drill down on our authentic value proposition and reinforce our brand for greater awareness and discovery. We also need to maximize group bookings at our sports venues and prioritize off-season and indoor things to do. We've also identified specific types of local development that will drive tourism. As council members, you have a direct impact on policy permitting and programming that can positively impact our ability to attract visitors. It is so incredibly important to continue to build on our strengths and find creative ways to elevate the visitor experience in our city while balancing our local needs. So there's a lot to dig into with the report. I truly hope you enjoy reading through it. Um, I will also be leaving some here, probably on the table over there for anyone that is interested. Um, it is also available digitally at Visit Morgan Hill. It is also available digitally at visitmorganhill.org in the footer of our website and the guiding documents. So, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Krista. Anyone?
I have no more speakers.
No other speakers. Okay, very good. Then we'll move on to the adoption of the agenda. If I can get a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion to adopt.
I'll second it. Moved by Councilmember Borjoli, seconded by Councilmember Spring. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There being none, that passes five zero. Then for the consent calendar, if there's any in the council or in the public who would like to pull any items for discussion? I see none. We will then, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, and had Borjoli, seconded by Councilmember Spring. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Passes five zero. Thank you so much.
Okay. Did you want to ask the public if they wanted to pull anything?
I did.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
No, no worries. No, I appreciate that. Thank you. For public hearings, item fourteen, conduct public hearing on the, and adopt a resolution to establish Old Monterey Road Underground Utilities District. And who are we going to have present that? There we go. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, teammates, Yacho, senior project manager. This staff report is to begin the process of the planning and designing of the Undergrounding Utility Project on Old Monterey Road from Yoggus Road to Monterey Road. For this particular project, work credits from PG&E using Route twenty-eight will be used. And in order to start using this fund, we would need to hold a public hearing and to form an Undergrounding Utility District. As far as timeline, the design will take, actually, it won't take long, but the process with PG&E could be very lengthy. And it could be anywhere between five to ten years before we see the completion of the work. So do you have any questions?
Thank you for that presentation. I think tight there. We'll see if there's any questions by the council. Councilmember Martinez Beltran?
Do you have any anticipated obstacles in getting PG&E there or timeframe that you think could be a factor?
There's no specific obstacles. It's just, it is, there are many cities that are using the same fund for similar, similar size and bigger projects. So we're, we're in line, but it, it just getting us to another line will, will take some time.
Okay, thanks.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember, why am I forgetting your name? Lebers?
We just met.
We go way back.
Thank you for your report. I just, could you repeat how long that you think it will, it might take? It was almost your closing statement. It was?
Yes, it was between five to ten years.
Five to ten years. Okay.
It would, it would involve the design phase, actually getting in line, design phase and the actual construction. So they did not get, provide a very detailed timeline, but they did mention that it would be a very lengthy process timeline wise.
And then I have one more question for you. So we do a lot of the digging and then they, they place the fiber and stuff, or is this totally a PG&E project?
We have the option to either have PG&E do the work or for the city to go through public bid process and hire a contractor to perform that work once the design's completed.
Okay. My concern is if, if we dig the trenching, ask for a contractor, and then it takes a long time for PG&E to come, I would be more comfortable if we had a date that PG&E was going to start before we start any work. So I just want to give you that information.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Councilmember Spring? I think, okay, we'll open for a public comment. Do you have any public comments on this?
I have no speakers.
There being none, we'll close. Public comment. I don't believe there'd be any, we need for council discussion. And if not, we'll entertain a motion. Councilmember Martinez Beltran?
Move to approve.
Moved to approve by Councilmember Martinez Beltran, seconded by Councilmember Lebers. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There being none, passes five zero. Thank you. Other business. Item fifteen, provide input on transportation master plan goals and adopt speed limits in accordance with updated engineering and traffic supply. Chris Gioni? And team?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, Chris Gioni, Public Services Director. The presentation and item in front of you now is another update that we are bringing to the council on the Transportation Master Plan update. So if you remember, in the, the fall, we came and took council feedback as we were initiating the, the, the plan. And now we are coming back to council with some more substance. We don't have a draft plan yet, but what we're asking for is feedback on goals and how we set up priorities as we move forward. And we're also bringing you the, the speed survey for review and approval tonight. And I'm gonna turn it over to, to our Robert Del Rio from Hexagon Transportation Consultants. He's going to walk through a brief presentation and then we're gonna take questions from the council.
Ruben, Mayor Turner, all council members. As Chris mentioned, we're here tonight to garner feedback on a couple items regarding transportation master plan, the first being the draft goals, strategies and actions that we've developed as part of our work thus far, and also the improvement prioritization criteria. We'll also look for your approval on the citywide speed survey that we've completed. And here tonight with me is Ruben Rodriguez. So I'll provide a brief summary of that as we move into the presentation. As a quick reminder, your role in the TMP is to provide input, garner input from the community and provide input and relay it to us. Also approve the speed survey itself and speed limits. Adopt the goals and actions and improvement priority that we're bringing forward tonight. And then in the future, review funding opportunities for the improvements of the TMP. Align the capital improvement program with those improvements and then finally approve a draft plan that we bring forward later in the fall. As a recap, as Chris mentioned, we were here in front of you in November of last year and provided an overview of the need and purpose of the TMP. We also introduced our consultant team, which included Tool Design, who I believe is on remotely to answer any questions tonight. We also provided a brief scope and described the components of the TMP and provide an anticipated schedule, as well as our outreach, community outreach efforts. We then took feedback from you that night on any transportation issues you felt were of concern. Since our meeting, we've held several stakeholder committee meetings, three, maybe four since the November one, because there was a fourth held in December of last year. And at each of those stakeholder meetings, we bring forward analysis or evaluation that we've completed in pieces. Some of it has been, as outlined here, community survey results. As you recall, there was an online survey available last fall. We did an analysis of regional cut through. We've also started evaluating pet and bike network layouts and gaps. Completed a update of the citywide travel demand forecasting model, completed extensive operations analysis and other entities as part of the TMP work. As part of each of those stakeholder meetings, we have held a workshop at the end of them. That's an exercise and an opportunity for the stakeholders to provide input and feedback on what we had presented that night. Not going to go through this slide. It's a summary of feedback we've received throughout the process thus far in regards to online survey. As expected, concerns relate to congestion, development growth, pet and bike safety on the roadway network as, as well as school safety. In terms of the draft goals, strategies and actions that we brought to the stakeholders, they've mentioned concern with safety again and implementation of the Vision Zero Plan. Regional cut through issue and trying to address that. And also closing network gaps in regards to the pet and bike facilities. We've also brought forward the draft prioritization criteria for the improvements. And the stakeholders have identified the need to prioritize pet and bike safety, vehicle operations, congestion, of course, and also the regional cut through issue. This slide just presents a simple kind of flow chart of the steps in the TMP process. The vision that consisted of what we've completed with your help and city staff help and as well as planning commission and the community via online surveys and the stakeholder input. Existing and future conditions consist of extensive analysis, again, the operations, peak hour operations analysis, roadway segment operations, and then looking at the pet and bike network throughout the city and identifying any gaps and where there's a lot of use of pedestrian and bicycle usage on a roadway. Then we moved into the needs assessment. Utilizing that info, we identified where we need to focus our attention for improvements as part of the TMP. We're currently looking at developing these strategies and identifying improvements to address those concerns or focus areas that we've identified. We then will move on to prioritizing whatever improvements we come up with, utilizing the prioritization criteria, and then ultimately looking at funding resources and implementing those improvements, or coming up with a plan to implement those improvements. This slide kind of just lists all the issues that we have identified as part of our work in the vision and existing conditions analysis and needs assessment in terms of speeding and safety, traffic flow, regional cut through issue, transit accessibility or lack thereof, bike and walking safety, gaps in the bike and pet network, and several other things, including emergency response times. We use that information in the draft, does, draft, the draft goals and strategies of the TMP. The first being regarding safety. So that's looking at safety for all road users, not just vehicles, not reduce just collisions related to vehicles, but all road users. That includes bikes and pads also. The second being increased transit options. That means improving the existing transit, our bike and pet facilities or expanding them, finding where there's gaps to make those improvements. The third being access to regional transit services and local destinations. So that's making the connection to the regional transit facilities, like All Train Downtown, downtown or other commercial facilities, as well as school and safety around schools. The fourth goal centers around congestion management. Again, that's looking at reducing travel times for trips within the city as well as addressing the regional cut through issue as best we can. And then looking at ways to encourage folks to use multimodal travel options. The next steps that we are really working on now is, again, identifying what improvements we want to incorporate into the TMP. As part of that process, we're going to develop measures that'll become part of a toolbox to address the different types of issues that we have identified. So we'll kind of organize those optional measures or alternatives into several categories as listed here for pet bikes, looking at urban design and placemaking improvements, improving vehicle operations and implementing traffic calming where needed. Again, safety, safety is a big issue. We'll always consider safety as part of any improvement we look at. In terms of the employment prioritization criteria, we, we are going to prioritize safety, of course. That's number one. That's not necessarily something that needs to be prioritized. Well, anything we look at as far as improvement or strategy will consider safety as the number one priority. There's several other criteria that are outlined in the staff report and have provided descriptions within that staff report. Those are based upon community feedback, feedback we got from yourselves, planning commission and city staff to kind of identify criteria that we will utilize to prioritize the many improvements that we might come up with as part of this TMP. We won't be able to implement them all, so we need to know which ones are most important based on these various criteria. The second group of criteria is related to feasibility. So that comes into city resources and funding. How feasible is it to implement those via funding measures or right away restrictions? With that, I'll kick it over to Ruben to talk about the citywide speed survey.
I want to give a quick review of the speed survey study. So Hexcom prepared this report with the goal of recommending and maintaining a speed limit throughout the city. This procedure needs to be periodically done by the vehicle code. So this speed study is, serves as an update from the two thousand and fifteen study that the city had prepared by back then. And we looked at the same study segments as the previous study. And the goals or purpose of this study is to justify regulations as well as to provide a framework for law enforcement, the police department to enforce the speeds, collect, get off speeding tickets and collect fines and whatnot. So again, this study need is a requirement by law. We need, and it provides some general requirements of what these studies need to include. And that's, this is the process that Hexcom follows and put together these speed studies. We need to include prevailing speeds. That means that we looked at radar counts and collect speed data on each of these study segments. We looked at collision records, what types of collisions, whether collisions occurred, as well as the frequency of those collisions. We'll also look at just the roadside development, adjacent land uses with each segment, what's number lanes, whether there's bike facilities, traffic and things of that nature. Now, overall, there's a laundry list of things that we looked at for each of these study segments. And then that's both code recommended, as well as the policy that we rolled and putting together our recommendations in our report. Got a quick summary here of what each of these things that we looked at. Not going to go through all of them, but in general, for each of these study segments, we looked at parking practices. We looked at what, what adjacent developments are. So is it offices, is it schools, is it a liability, is it the downtown? And all this, all these things we take into account and providing our recommendations, as well as put together these nice summary worksheets for the city to have, as well as the police department to use in enforcing the speeds on each of the city's streets. Just a quick overview of what we prepared and what we looked at. We collected data through most of all of last year. We did radar counts, which on each of those segments, as well as machine two counts. Those are used to modify the speed to know the daily traffic volume. And we also looked at collision history over a five-year period. So again, that's looking at collision type, that's looking at collision occurrence and the frequency of those collisions. To sum up, we provided a speed, speed report to the city. And city staff reviewed, as well as the police department reviewed. We prepared individual worksheets for each of the study segments. And those summarize the collected, the analysis performed, as well as our recommendations for the posted speed for each of those segments. The most part of the recommendations were to maintain the same existing posted speed. We did recommend lowering the speed limit on five different stations. And again, the goal here is, why we're presenting this today is for you guys to review it for, and that will enable the police department to start or continue enforcing the speed limits throughout the city roadways.
Very good. Thank you.
All right, just to wrap up here, just to let you know of the next steps in the TMP process. Again, we're working on finalizing a list of improvements. Hopefully that's done in early summer. Then we'll also finalize the goals and prioritization criteria that you're reviewing early this summer. Then go back out to the community via online surveys and then another community meeting to garner their feedback on what we've come up with thus far, as far as improvement opportunities to be included in the TMP. And then we'll finalize the improvements and bring a draft TMP back to you hopefully in late fall.
All right, very good. Are there any questions we'd like to start with? Councilmember Borjoli?
Thank you, Mayor. With relation to cut through traffic, did you find any additional information that was drastically different from a prior study that you gave? I don't know if you gave it two years ago. I don't quite remember that's how many years ago. But was there a significant change in cut through traffic?
How how would I call it a significant change? There was an increase in cut through traffic that we found with the update. Um, it was really just an update of a 2019 study that had been completed. Um, so when we looked at the data, we of course saw a decrease in cut through during the COVID phase. Um, but that has kind of returned now and um somewhat worsened um than pre-COVID conditions.
So I I if I remember, it was something like twenty five to thirty percent cut through traffic. So are you saying there's an increase from that amount prior?
Well, we look specifically at roadways. So there's a report that we produced and is available online on the project website that goes into detail and looked at the composition of cut through traffic on a lot of roadways throughout the city. So the percentage of cut through on each of those streets varies. Um, there are some with cut through composition as high as forty percent. Um, that's on the smaller roads. Um, and then the the more major roads like Butterfield and Monterey Road, which are the primary north-south cut through, those are in the range of twenty five to thirty percent.
Thank you. Um, uh, when you say traffic calming, uh try and institute different types of traffic calming, could you elaborate on that, please?
Um, when we're looking at traffic calming, we we need to consider what issue we're trying to address. So traffic calming in terms of regional cut through is a lot different than traffic calming in terms of local neighborhood cut through. Um, so you might have a school in the neighborhood and folks are using adjacent residential struts to bypass a major roadway that has congestion on it. Um, that type of traffic calming is addressed a lot different than regional cut through. With a localized traffic calming, it may be kind of more, I would describe as more minor um improvements or adjustments that have to be made. Um, those could be physical or they could just be signage. Um, you know, we don't typically recommend that you close roads because that and that has an overall effect on uh city circulation. Um, when we look at regional cut through, that's a lot different in that what we are aiming to do is discourage the use of city streets that cut through. So basically, the goal is to increase travel time um for, you know, any regional cut through so that it it isn't, you know, utilizing city streets does not decrease travel time. Um, you know, significantly that detours them off the freeway itself. So that that could be what you kind of implement now as far as signage and maybe some um roadway detours um on minor streets.
I I think one thing that's important is we're we're not, those are the thoughts we're working on. But that's going to be put together in the plan that's going to come back to you um with how we prioritize those type of measures.
Thank you. Uh, going on that, this uh, do we still have um the the signaling from uh three to six or seven on Butterfield?
Yeah, we're gonna be putting the signs back out. We've taken, we, as you know, we have signs on both ends encouraging people to um use Butterfield and we'll be continuing to do to do that um on and off. We've used the signs in other areas and those will leaderboards and those will go back on as well. And with this plan, we'd look to improve on that um further. And I think um with this plan, we will hopefully formalize some of those routes as signaling, you know, which roads we we want to use primary for traffic to get through versus the multimodal roads. Um, and we've we've looked at that a bit and that will come back in the plan as well, too.
So what I really meant was uh the 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 lights. So are the lights timed so when you start at Conklin and go all the way down?
We have, we have some on Butterfield is the only roadway in the city as we install the controllers that we have. Some of that on some of the signals that can can work together, but not yeah, not anywhere else. Yes.
Because I I I traveled that road and I I don't, I don't get the 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 enhancement of the signaling. Uh, so I I was saying, is it in operation now or it's it is not?
There's some operation, but we're going to continue to enhance that as we go forward. And that would be an opportunity um with the plan to continue to to do that.
Right, okay, thank you. Um. Uh, I I asked in a in uh the previous questions before this meeting to uh our city manager uh a a list of collisions in the last couple of years. Um, and you did send me something. Um, and um, and and you gave me a a data file which only went up to uh twenty twenty one. So it didn't have the last couple of years, but the the one that identified collisions uh throughout the whole city, I I saw that on Monterey Road. Uh, there were and 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 I I may be off by one or two. There were like ten major collisions uh where other parts of the city, there was like, you know, two here and and three here. And and so my point is Monterey Road uh seems to be a major factor relative to collisions. Uh, it didn't, it didn't cite that these collisions, what time of the day these collisions happen. So you can maybe uh marry it to the cut through traffic timeframe. So I I don't have that data. But my point I'm trying to make is it appears that Monterey Road uh is the bulk of the collisions. And so I think what we need to do is focus in on you know, what we can do to help that situation and have less collisions uh in in that roadway. And then I I've always touted that we should um we we do speed limits in the downtown, uh in the five block downtown area. But the uh the response I got from uh the city manager was because of the speed law. Uh, you really can't do that. However, uh I'm going to pose the question going forward is what if you identify, you know, a relative high amount of traffic incidents uh in that particular area? Is there something that we can do to circumvent the law or uh uh um go to an agency to get a a waiver for that law in that certain area? So I I I asked a lot of questions there and I apologize.
I'm gonna kind of go in order to answer your questions and then uh Robert or Ruben can jump in too. But so, yes, we have recognized through the data that we've looked at that Monterey, the Monterey corridor is um is um has a higher amount of accidents. One of the things that I think is important for tonight is the feedback you just gave us, like where are we focusing? Because that pri- prioritization criteria that Robert was talking about really says where should we focus? Should we focus on where we see those accidents occurring versus focusing everywhere? Should we focus on where the people are, um high amounts of pedestrians uh that are in as well as high amounts of vehicles? Should we be focusing on there? So that's where that prioritization criteria comes in. And we do see that on the data. Um, Robert, correct me if I'm wrong, to tw- we only have, we only are using twenty twenty one because that's the data that's available to us because there's usually about a two year lag.
Uh, that's correct. So we we don't, we can't utilize the most recent data yet.
Yeah, and so we're we're usually about two year, two years behind in using get reviewing the data. So that's just what we use. But we don't think there's going to be a different trend in the more recent years as far as the Monterey Road goes. Um, and then just kind of following through on the speed limit through downtown. Um, Robert and Ruben will tell tell you that I have pressured them considerably to review the ability to reduce it below twenty five miles an hour. Um, if we do that, it will um be a risk to our police department being of what they write a citation for something lower than that. It may get thrown out. It will likely get thrown out if someone contests the ticket. So we aren't recommending at this time going lower than the twenty five miles miles an hour. And we've talked about that with our police department as well. It doesn't mean we can't review this and continue to review it in the future. Um, and it's something we can keep our eyes on as well as we do on all city streets. We don't have to wait um eight years to redo the the engineering and traffic study. We can look at that again. Um, the the issue we have and Ruben can jump up and correct me if I'm wrong is law has specific provisions for reducing the speed limit to below twenty five miles an hour in a business district, and we do not meet those provisions. And that includes reviewing accident data because we do that for all the segments. So the work Ruben did reviewed all that accident data for all those segments that we're we're setting speed limits on. So if we could reduce it, we would, but we'll continue to monitor it going forward. It doesn't mean just because we're maintaining it now that we have to keep it that way. So we can, we can re-review, review that in the future.
Uh, thank you, gentlemen. Uh, thank you, Mayor.
Sure, thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Spring?
Uh, uh, thank you for the report. I I admit I haven't digested the whole thing. We got it Friday evening and then there's a lot of data to look into, especially when you start clicking all those links. There also in there and have another couple hundreds of pages each link. Um, but I'm I'm trying to to kind of figure out the the more overall part of this and I'll I'll add comments later, uh right? So this is questions only. The the uh with Augusta survey, what what I noticed i- is that we don't really have too much data from younger families and younger people, uh which also then implies not not a lot of data from parents dropping off kids, uh uh parents commuting and so on, or people commuting generally. It's more the older uh population that might not have to deal with some of those issues anymore that those of us deal with that still have to commute. The so, so did you go out and 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 talk to to uh parents at schools, uh uh H O Hs and so on as well to get uh really a feeling of what's happening in the individual neighborhoods across the city?
We we Oh, go ahead. I I'll just jump in. You're you're correct in that uh in regards to the online community survey that was up last fall. We had five hundred respondents, however, the majority of them were older. Um, and we we collected data on demographics and a lot of them did state they were retired. So these are not daily commuters. Um, so you're right in that regard. Um, but that's the outside of the community meeting we've held. That's the extent of the community outreach we've completed thus far. Um, again, we we went into the data collection phase, analysis phase, and haven't gone back out to the community again and looked at, you know, other outreach opportunities to expand and put uh our feedback from the younger residents in Morgan Hill.
And I I think we we have an opportunity and I think there's also um when you're just asking for general feedback, like it it's a little different than when you have a proposal in front of you. So as we come with a draft plan, I think it's going to be an opportunity to get feedback from more people and specific people to tell us what's missing, what we miss for what your neighborhood values the most and what what do we, what do we get right? Um, and I think, I think there, I think we we can always do more, but I think between all the things we're looking at, because in addition to just a direct community feedback, we're looking at where those collisions are happening, right? So we know that those are, we're we're looking at that other data too. So hopefully that will help us recognize what some of the issues are for those specific neighborhoods. But as we come back with the plan, I think we can, we hope, hopefully get more people engaged.
Yeah, so so have have you, as again, I'm coming, and all the feedback providers much appreciated, right? I'm just wondering, have you also assessed where you didn't get feedback and and what you're going to do to get more feedback where you have certain certain uh uh missing segments of our community? Clearly, when you look at where the feedback is coming from, they're right. And so that's, in my opinion, shouldn't there be an action plan somewhat? And how do we get input where we don't have it yet?
Yeah, and I I think, I think we we have reviewed that and we did. We put together the stakeholders group. We tried to make it representative from the the various segments of the community with youth, parents, um retirees. Um, and we tried to uh look at geography and get representatives from all geographical areas. But I will say um that commitment from that stakeholders group, it's been hot up. We've had people coming out at every meeting, but not everyone can make every meeting. So it it's also been tough to even keep that group together. Um, so it it's something I think we 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 will be ready for the summer to try and um hit those areas where that we haven't um got feedback from.
Right, and 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 again, as part of the action of kind of kind of translating and I I am personally very much, as you know, uh concerned about pedestrian safety, right? And some of our, whether it's Watson Federal Road or Hale Avenue, uh Monterey and so on. Uh, um, I don't see a lot of actions that really address pedestrian safety for pedestrians that want to cross from one side to the other. Uh, where where we clearly have certain gaps uh uh on 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 many of our uh roads and and just reducing the speed limit by five miles per hour, I don't think that's going to solve it unless you disagree with me.
No, we we don't disagree with you at all. And I think what we don't have in the plan yet is those details. But um the plan's not starting from scratch either. So we have the the requests that we have and the and the feedback we're getting from the community for the last, you know, decade on where we need to um make improvements and some we've gradually making little improvements, little improvements. We we have more improvements we're trying to do in the capital improvement program. But hopefully what this plan does is we're able to take all that, take the new feedback from residents that we're getting through the plan and build that list of improvements we want. That list is going to be immense. Um, I can tell you just from the emails I get from our community members, it's going to be, you know, it could be ten pages long on where we need enhanced crosswalks, where we need um improved signalization. So what is really important is looking at how we prioritize those because we're not going to be able to start with everything. So how do we get that um priority established? And that's what we're trying to kind of walk through um with the the council. And if we went to planning commission, park and rec commission to get feedback on this prioritization. So when we come back with those, that list of those improvements you're talking about, um, how do we prioritize?
Right, and I and I I will put some feedback there on on the comment part. But with regards to that, have you assessed, you know, where in our city we have schools, various schools, public others, uh daycare centers, uh may maybe uh uh facilities for elder care? Or just where all the 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 weakest pedestrians are in the community? Do have you assessed that? Yeah, and and if so, where in the actions do I see that? Any anything listed? Because I didn't see anything yet.
Well, we we have completed thorough analysis. There's a lot of mapping. I've been, I've encouraged you to look at the project website. Robert, can you do mind speaking directly into the microphone so folks in the back can hear you as well? Sorry, sorry about that. Um, so yes, we've we've completed thorough analysis of, you know, where pedestrians are, uh where there's high intensity or a large number of pedestrians, where bicyclists are using um roadways. Um, there's a lot of mapping that tool design our teammate has created and is available on the uh project website um as well as collision history. Um, so a lot of the collisions throughout the city have been mapped to identify um uh like locations where there's a lot of collisions uh on corridors. Um, in regards to pet and bike safety, they've mapped um like priority areas where especially schools, um downtown area where you see a lot of pedestrians. So those will be our focus area. That's part of the needs assessment to say um these areas are missing facilities, whether it's crosswalks uh at certain locations where we see a lot of pedestrians. Um, and then moving on to the identification of improvements, that will be part of the criteria that we're looking at. Um, we're not just looking at operations at intersections, we're looking at collisions. Did those collisions involve pets and bikes? Then we have to look at improvements for pet and bike at those intersection locations or maybe mid-block locations. So there's a lot of mapping that's available on the website of all this data. Um, so as Chris mentioned, that's we haven't identified exact improvements or exact locations for those improvements yet. That's where we are right now in the phase of the process.
Yeah, so my my, uh, thank you. Uh, and again, I admit I haven't looked at every, everything that is that got provided. But I I'm more thinking either from a higher level, right? Where we have daycare or schools, any type of schools. I'm not talking about the few public schools only uh that we have, uh that there's many more, right? Uh, and and they're often in neighborhoods as well. And and have you looked into to putting some actions around where we have daycare, daycare center schools? And then they're like to what is needed to actually improve the pedestrian safety? Not not based upon collision data, by all means, the goal has to be to prevent collision. So we don't have that data, right? And hopefully never will have a collision. But what what are we doing specifically in those areas to make sure we will never have a collision?
Well, we haven't gotten to that phase yet as as far as identifying specific things to implement areas like schools. Um, you know, this our our criteria right now are uh strategies and actions are draft. So what you're providing now is the input we're looking for. Um, we'll add action items. The action items right now and strategies are fairly general. It's like kind of more broad areas or focus things that we want to look at. Um, the mapping actually identifies school areas and where there's a lot The mapping actually identifies school areas and where there's a lot of pedestrians, where there's accidents occurring that. Involve a pet or bicyclists, and those are areas where we would provide or identify. Detailed improvements that need to be implemented. And that will be part of the plan, not necessarily part of a specific action. So we're not going to list. You know, a hundred actions as part of this.
Yeah, I think, Robert, I think, council member, I think. Like in goal one under strategy, one point two, I think that kind of covers what you're talking about. But we can be more explicit if the council wants us to be more explicit in the goal. So if you're giving that as feedback, we can absolutely do that.
Yeah, I'll give you a feedback. So and the last question I have is really to the proposal of reduction of speed limits, right? I I I'm just, you know, of streets I'm familiar with and none of them are listed, right? Are they just? Not important or why are they not listed? And I'm talking about really neighborhood streets and.
Yeah, neighborhood streets that aren't listed would be at twenty-five miles an hour and we can't we can't lower them lower than that. So they would be set at twenty-five miles an hour.
And we can't lower because?
The state law, that's that's what the law is.
Even though it's a neighborhood?
Yes.
Okay, that goes that one. And 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 one more question I forgot. Do we have any data of, and maybe that's a question for the police department, but did you look at how many? Tickets got issued and where and why and? Do we issue tickets in various areas of town or always along the main corridors?
As the chief comes up, we don't look at citations in the, it's not a criteria of what we look at for the study.
I'm sorry, could you repeat your question?
I'm wondering, you know, part of the action plan is also to police enforcement of speed limits and so on, but. If that only happens along Monterey Road or so and not in the neighborhoods, right? It's maybe not the right strategy and I'm wondering if part of, you know, working out strategies and actions. If, and I guess I got the answer, if they look at how many tickets you issued and where at, right? To me, that's additional data.
Yes, absolutely is. And we also have a traffic hotline that we can pull data from and share that as well.
I think there's two different things. So on the on the speed study that we use to set the speed limits, we have to strictly. Follow the state law in doing that. That's what we have to do or else the teammates and police can't. Buy tickets or their tickets won't stand up. So we're following the law. On the strategies that are the goals and strategies. We can definitely, and we are working with the police department, Captain Ramos is on our on our team that works on this. Work on those strategies, but I I I think we're not, we're not trying to dictate how. Police is going to enforce, but I think the question is just PD, I mean, how they. They have a, they have a very good plan on how they they target speed enforcement because I'm familiar with it. They have a good process. So I know the chief can talk through that. If that once, if the council thinks that should be outlined in the. Strategies, we can of course work with the police department to make sure it's. In there more clearly.
Back go hand in hand?
It does. It does, but I think.
That's common sense.
Right, yeah, and it does, it does. So I think I'm just, if if. If it's just a question, yes, we do it. If it's how can we change the proposed draft goals and strategies and you're providing us feedback, we can take that feedback.
Okay, I'm out of time, but I'll have some comment. Thank you. Appreciate.
Thank you. Thank you, chief. Thank you, council member. Anyone else? Council member Martinez Beltran.
Thank you. I wanted to ask on the cut throughs, have we talked about possibly using roundabouts for that? I'm really interested in us looking at roundabouts. I know I've mentioned this before and wanted to see what has come. Of any of that.
When you talk about cut through, are you referring to the regional? Regional cut through in terms of one-on-one diversion or just?
Tell me, have there been any areas identified for roundabouts?
We haven't gotten to that point yet of identifying specific improvements for specific issues yet. As I mentioned in the presentation, where we've come up with options as examples of types of improvements and roundabouts. Are an options or traffic circles are an option for. Somewhat of a traffic calming measure for unidentified problems. So if we receive comment from the community or yourselves in regards to a specific street. A local street that not is not necessarily a regional cut through issue, it's just a local cut through issue, then that's something we look at. And that's a potential measure that we could consider.
I just want to make sure that it is being considered. I know you're not there. You know, we're moving towards funding for capital improvements. So I want to make sure that it's on the docket. Thank you very much for that. I also wanted to ask, I see that there is speed reduction. On some different areas here. And you talked about collisions and you talked about where there's been accidents. And we've had, I have had and I've shared that lots of accidents that have happened on Butterfield. In fact, so. So much, there's been, I think, in the past six years, we've had cars up. On Butterfield where HOAs have had to replace their gates twice and. You know. I'm hoping that we could also look at reducing some speed there. We had them advocate for changing our signage along Butterfield as well. And so I'm wondering, you know, I too am looking at this as. Yes, some of, you know, some of where we might want to make some changes, but we need to be asking families, we need to be asking parents. We need to be looking at where kids are traveling with their bikes and their skates and their skateboards. We've got walking paths which. Inherently tells people this is a safe place to walk and bike and be mobile. And that's along Butterfield. We have beautiful walking areas all along Butterfield from Tenet onto Cochrane. And we've got people flying through there. It's scary. It's really scary. That's my path that I take when I do my walks, when walking my dog, when I'm, you know, we've got high density right there on Dunn. And Butterfield at courthouse on our Saturdays, on our Fridays, Thursday evenings, you've got tons of people. Walking myself and neighbors. I mean, I see people walking all the time into downtown. So I think we really need to think about. That as well. And how we can slow that down because it's it's very scary, really scary. So can you, could you please comment on that?
I'd say I think you've described the overall TMP effort itself. That is the focus of the TMP is looking at improving safety for pets, bikes. Making the roadway safer just in general for all roadway users. If there's specific locations. You mentioned Butterfield Road, move track collisions. So we're able to, like, as I mentioned, those have already been mapped. There's extensive mapping of all the collisions. So Butterfield might be identified as a high injury network corridor because there's so many collisions along there. So we would then look at some type of improvements or any improvements that we can incorporate there.
Sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
I'd mention that as part of that effort and reviewing all this analysis, all the data that we've collected. We've also started to look at developing what we call street typologies. So. Those would be kind of a layer on top of the general plan, functional classification for all the city roadways. And where we identify what should be prioritized on specific roadways. Butterfield, for instance, is something that we would look at because. Traffic volume is high and there's the speeds are high, so it's not comfortable for a bicyclist or a pedestrian. There needs to be. Separated facilities along Butterfield. Then we look at roadways like Main. Which we want to prioritize pet and bikes, not vehicular traffic, because that's kind of a roadway that serves inner-city trips and bicyclists and pets. Should feel comfortable using those roads. There's something we call a Main Street. That's something like downtown Third Street. Where it's pedestrian and bicycle focused. It's not the intent or the priority is not serving vehicular traffic. So we consider all this data, collisions, the use of the roadways, how many pets and bikes out there, what facilities are out there today? And look at what can be improved. Ultimately, we're going to have a pretty large matrix, as Chris mentioned, and a long list of intersections or roadways. That we've identified issues on, and we're going to go through that matrix and use these criteria that I've described. To check boxes and say, look, this has a pet bike collision issue, this has an operational issue, this location has an operational issue. This location is near a school, so we want to prioritize that and that should be an improvement or identify. Applicable improvements to address whatever issues on at an intersection or a roadway like you're describing.
Okay. You know. Unfortunately, I'm very familiar with with our budget and knowing the constraints that we face is, I'm sure have come away of. And so I really want to make sure that this is a priority that. And it seems to me that the traffic influence would be phenomenal if we were able to do all of those things. But right now it looks like one of the main tools that we have is the ability to reduce our speed. So I would like for us to look at reducing speed on Butterfield in those areas where we have continued to. Intensify our density of housing and where people live. And. We've got, you know, it really comes to battle when we talk about. In our complete streets and and all that. So I want to make sure that we're looking, that we address the speeding. And the danger that we have and have created on Butterfield.
I I just respond as like this is mentioned a couple of times already in regards to reducing speeds. It's restricted, you're restricted to state laws. And really, if you look at the speed survey that we completed. We looked at a hundred roadway segments or two hundred roadway segments throughout the city. We collected radar data. That is the basis of setting those speed limits. You cannot lower the speed. Below what the radar data collection has provided. That's just a state law. So anything further? You know, I guess maybe you want to talk about would require city action or a policy.
Can you explain to me what the radar data is?
To?
From Butterfield particularly?
We can pull it up. I don't know if we've been hesitant, but I can pull that up.
We're waiting on that. I'll move on to another point if that's okay.
Sure, you go ahead.
I would also like to talk about Cochran, Mission View, De Anderson in the list in the appendix two, attachment two, talks about forty miles. On Molly Gara, I have specifically, I have done a video with residents to try and win a sign so that we could reduce. Speed there. I have had numerous residents organize and. Chat with me numerous times about the speed there. We've got housing there and we've also got Park Anderson there. I'm sure you're familiar with it. So I'd also like to hear about that as well if we could, please.
So I just go back and I think Ruben can come up and talk about Butterfield and talk about that segment specifically. Reducing the speed limit is not a tool we have below what the state law allows to slow down the speeding. There are other tools with traffic calming that we can look in those areas to reduce the speed, but just reducing the speed limit is not something we have that can be done. Our police.
So you're telling me that we we cannot reduce the speed on Butterfield. It must remain. Three.
Limit.
Cannot reduce the speed limit on Butterfield.
Yeah, so let me try and, but there's definitely a lot of wheels turning here. I think let's start from, you know, code requirements and where we're approaching this now. First off, from an engineering standpoint, we. We do have to follow the code. The code specifically states we can't just arbitrarily lower speed limits. We have to provide. Have to go through this laundry list, a checklist for providing a recommended speed limit that is looking at existing speeds. That's the radar data that you referred to. Looking at the road across cross section, how many lanes is there a median, is there bike thing, is it a narrow road, things of that nature. So from the speed study perspective, we do have very strict criteria that we need to stick through. And we can't just arbitrarily lower the speed limits. As Robert and Chris have mentioned, we can have a separate item. We can start looking at identifying these locations that can. Have to look at providing future changes and recommendations and the benefit of the matrix, how we can. Improve safety or improve kind of circulation that you're talking about. Maybe that kind of helps, but there's definitely, except there's a lot of wheels turning here.
I understand. I'm not asking that we arbitrarily do it. I have documentation that we have residents very concerned about this. Or agree with them. We've had collisions and cars that have ended up on medians. We have HOAs that have replaced their fences. So not talking about arbitrarily, I'm suggesting that we. Exercise what we can do with the speed limit and see if we can find a way with all of the information that we have to reduce that speed limit because it is a very scary. It's scary.
Yeah, I'd like to comment regarding some of the challenges that our traffic team is having when they're issuing citations. And based on the engineering data results, the judge. For the traffic officers testifying court about a speeding citation, the judge asks for the. Engineering survey and if the road. It allows for a certain speed and based on the data, the average speed on that roadway. The judge has been throwing out the citations that the police officers are writing. And so we are very dependent on what the roadways are designed for and can handle based on the engineering survey.
Okay, and what is, what is that for? What is it that the judge is throwing out? What speed limit is that?
Or citations. So he uses the engineering speed survey. That we're talking about. So if we lowered the speed limit on those roadways. And issued a citation, the judge would not uphold that citation if the roadway was designed to handle higher speeds.
So chief, isn't that exactly what we would be facing on Monterey?
I'm uncertain of your question.
Wouldn't we be facing the same dilemma on Monterey of the judge because it's Monterey Highway? If we want to reduce our speeds?
I was solely commenting on the.
That's what I'm trying to say is that we're running that risk. What essentially is on the list. There's no guarantee. And so I'm suggesting that since we're willing to do that in one area. We do have collisions and we have seen that it's dangerous. Perhaps we could look at doing that. And that's all that I'm asking is that.
All the recommendations are based on the speed surveys. We're not, we're not reducing the speeds. Downtown on Monterey because.
We're looking to try to get there. That's what I understand.
The same thing can happen anywhere. We can continue to evaluate and maybe there if more recent data comes out that says, you know, we're having. More accidents in certain areas of Butterfield. We can continue to look at that and we will, we will. And and that that's something we want to do, but. If we, right now, we don't believe we have the data to reduce the justification to reduce it, reduce the speed in those segments. We can, we can, we can review it further and we can follow up. I do recommend we approve this survey tonight because it helps us enforce our existing speed limits. We can, we can continue to review. We can have a specific conversation and go through the data with you and we can always come back with an updated speed survey. On specific segments at any time in the future.
One more, one more question and we can move on.
I've asked my last question. I'm hoping that you're going to add. Address the Molly Gara, but I would if you could please send me this engineering speed survey. I would love to have that.
It's in the, it's in the link in the staff report, but I can send it specifically to you.
Mine doesn't open. I think it's because of the Mimecast, but I'm working on that.
I can get it to you as a text message to or print it out.
Okay, council member.
Just the Molly Gara, if you could.
Okay.
Molly Gara. Cochran, from Molly Gara to Anderson. Maybe was going to get to that. I already asked the question.
Sure, go ahead. That gave the question for Cochran.
Oh, yeah, it was that Molly Gara was. Oh, yeah, it was that, um, Malagira was. On Cochran from Mission View down past Malagira, that that was. Uh, could we look at that? That was forty miles an hour. It was for the park and that I've done this video to try and win this traffic sign. You're remembering this, um, residents have organized HOAs. They're upset about it.
He may not remember the video. Can we do it?
Yes, but I'm, I'm, I'm asking, can we also look at that? What is the issue with staying at forty miles per hour on Mon- on Cochran?
Again, I think like Chris mentioned, if that wants to be like a focus area as we, as we come up with policies and the matrix, I think that's something that we can look at further. But within, you know, the analysis that we already sort of in looking at, looking at existing conditions. Um, you know, we provide our recommendations that it states in the report.
But was that recommendation included in this that would be asked to approve tonight?
Should be if it's one of the study segments, if you, if you pulled back one of the study segments, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it, and it is, I mean, that, that segment, um, the. Recommendation is there, one of the, the next segments down. Uh, we were able to use things and and Ruben and Robert looked at this and we tried to figure out how to reduce speed limits and. Based on locations, um, then the next segment down from what you're talking about, we had a senior living facility that helped us reduce. Um, maintain a reduced speed in that area that we, that we use. So there's things that go into it and they're in the, the survey. So we went through and tried to reduce the speeds limits in every area we, we could. Um, and, um, I, I went through it. If you ask them, I asked them. Specifically in all several areas, how can we do this and what, what we legally could reduce and, um. That our officers and PD teammates can enforce, we did. Um, so, um, but that section of Malagira, based on the existing speeds there, um, and the make of the road. Didn't allow us to reduce the speed limit there.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on. Thank you. Thank you, councilmember.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, uh, for your report. And my colleagues have done a great job of asking a lot of questions I was gonna ask, so I'm gonna keep it pretty simple here. Um, I'm talking about downtown. We have a speed limit that you say we cannot reduce. Yet there is speeding through there. Is there other things that we can do? Such as, and don't throw eggs at me or anything, speed bumps. Would they be allowed to slow traffic without reducing the speed limit?
So speed bumps can be used in areas, um, that are especially areas that are twenty-five miles an hour. We don't, um, we don't always recommend them because we typically don't recommend them because they slow the speeds, especially. Um, in that area at a really small spot and then people speed up immediately. Um, and they get to the same, same speeds. So we, and so we don't re- recommend speed bumps, but it is. Something we can look at in the plan and using in different areas as well for slower speed areas.
Okay, uh, yeah, because you're saying we can't change it due to the law, but and you say there's other things we can do. So that was one of my suggestions. I think if you make the speed bumps close enough, they don't have time to really speed up. So I mean, yeah, and there's probably some recommendation of how far apart they have to be. I understand that. So, but it's something I think we should consider, especially in our downtown with all the outside dining. It's, um, I, you know, have experienced kind of, you know, it's kind of tough to eat outside because they're zooming by. So. Let's look at that too, all right? And I'd also like to make it more bike and pedestrian friendly downtown. So besides. Cochran, which in Butterfield, we're in all concerns. My concern is directly downtown.
Definitely, and we, we can look at, we would look at traffic, how many measures, speed bumps can be one, but there are others as well that can, can help us as well.
Well, keep us informed. I'd be interested in what those others are. I'm sure we're not putting around about down there.
Definitely not.
Thank you, councilmember. I've got a couple of questions soon. I think, I think there's a theme here that you're seeing and it's about speeding. Uh, so we could lower, we could lower speed limits, we could increase speed limits. People will always exceed the speed limit. So the challenge that we have is, it isn't, to me, is enforcement. I mean, we don't, we don't have, I don't think we have enough personnel to really be out there. Uh, capturing every speeder, but at some point. Technology may have to be introduced somewhere in some of these areas where we can, we can then sort of manage. Speed through citations by way of technology.
Uh, there, there's maybe an opportunity for that in the future. There's a pilot, three, three cities in the state have been authorized. You're familiar with that. San Jose is one of them. Um, I've talked to the police chief about this, um, well before the, the pilot cities were allowed to begin doing the. Uh, speed ticket cameras. Um, so the, the state's plan is to do that as a pilot with these cities, but there may be opportunities for us to look at that. Um, once the pilot's complete and that be extended to more cities or all cities. So there's something we can also advocate for going forward.
Yeah. I think one of the, one of the areas is Dunn Avenue, leading up to Holiday Lake Estate, Estates, long stretch of road there. And speeds get, uh, uh, I mean, they're just speeding up and down that street. So I mean, that's probably a focus area that hasn't already looked at. Not again, not, not again, not about reducing speeds. It comes down to, you know, enforcement and how do we do that?
Definitely.
Okay, but there was a, you talked about, uh, using signs to divert traffic off of Monterey onto Butterfield, which had been done before. Uh, and maybe not, not very effectively. Was there any tracking? Was there any data captured to see how much traffic did divert off to, off to Butterfield? Off of Monterey?
We did track that. I do not have that at the tip of my fingers from the, from the last, um. From the, when we, when we last tried the lane reduction, we did track, um, some of that data. Um, we did for that initial trial period, um, and there was some minimal, um, success. Um, but when we, we had got gotten through it, um. There was really a need, um, for the Hill Avenue extension to help on the other side, which was not open yet as well. One of the things we looked at. And we can kind of go through the report that happened at that, at that time, but there was some. Transfer of the, the traffic to Butterfield, not enough to reduce traffic significantly through the downtown.
There's a reason to believe there might be a different outcome this time around by putting signs up?
Um, we're just doing that to continue to support our downtown by encouraging people to take Butterfield if they're not going to the downtown. Uh, and as I think, uh, several people, um, who used it experienced, i- it was actually faster. So we're just reminding people that as well, whether that's, um, whether that's, um, our residents or people driving through. So it's, it hasn't been a, um, it, it's not necessarily something we're doing to try and. Um. And change everybody's way of traveling. It's just a reminder. And I think, uh. The other opportunity we'll have is when the Hill Avenue extension is completed in a few months, we will, um.
Is it a few months? I hope so. I've been telling people a few weeks. I better change that whole message.
But we're, the hopefully the work to, uh, fix the issues with the Hill Avenue will have, begin in a few weeks. But we have to repave, so.
Okay, very good, yeah. Uh, and and also I will say I'm with, uh, councilmember Martinez Beltran. I, I like roundabouts. Wherever they could be used, I think would be great. I know there's some limitations, but, um, I think those are great for. For lowering speeds and and moving traffic pretty efficiently, so. So I've got, thank you, gentlemen. Any, uh, let's see, at this point, we're going to open it to public comment. Any public comments on this item?
I have no speakers.
Again, we'll close public comment and bring it back for council discussion. I think councilmember, you had a few comments.
Uh, uh, thank you, mayor. Uh, some of my comments really are related to, I, I'd like to close some loopholes. Uh, and make sure we get data of also of our younger, uh, generation, including commuters and parents. Uh, and I, I think, you know, that can be collected through HOA's visits or, uh, going to schools and daycare centers and. Or just go in the morning when parents that drop off the kids and you get a lot of information of what could be improved. Uh, no matter where those are. And we should focus not just on the public schools that we know of, but, but there are other schools. Whether it's Stratford School, Christian, Crossroads, uh, and there's tons of them across the city, right? Uh, and the smaller ones, but they all have kids, right, going there and, uh, and I think we need to, to. I, as part of, of an action plan, I'd like to understand what are we doing in those areas, right? If, if the speed limit is not an option, then maybe sign, special signage is an option or something else, right? Or, uh, educational efforts or, or half hour chief is standing there for an hour and that will help. Uh, no, I'm serious. I, it's just having a police car there for an hour, uh, helps, right? Doesn't even have anyone in it. Uh, but, uh, I'm not joking, but, uh, it, it does help, right? And I'm sure he knows that better than me. Uh, um, so I'd like to, to aim, get more data from where we don't have it yet and really understand across. Where we have daycare and the schools, uh, facilities for elderly, what else do we need to do, right? As part of an action plan. Uh, or what we could, I'm not saying we can't do everything, but at least I'd like to understand what our options are. Uh, the other thing, uh, you know, with, uh, reducing speed is great, but if we don't enforce it, right? Uh, what's the point, right? Uh, those of us who live along some of, whether it's Butterfield or in. In my case, it's Hale Avenue, right? Uh, uh, the, the second there's no traffic on Hale, everyone speeds, right? And, and then speed limit doesn't matter if it's not enforced, uh, but it's still dangerous. And I, and I'd like to see answers from the city. What else do we do, uh, to, to fix that? Uh, it, it's not clear to me why, wh- when we have hail, for example, use it as an example, why we have hail. Uh, with different speed limits across hail, it's still hail. Uh, it's the same hail from Tilton and to, to Maine. Uh, why are there the two or three different speed limits along, along that street? Doesn't make sense to me. Uh, so someone has to explain that to me, why, why it's safer. Uh, why it's thirty-five miles, uh, between Wright and Maine and forty-five miles in the Tilton area. It's the same street. I, I, I don't quite understand the logic. I'd like to understand that logic, yeah.
Uh, it, it's based on the state. I want to, just, this is a running clock. We got fifteen minutes for everybody's comments here, so I would ask to keep.
I'm providing that as input to consider. I, I don't even expect a specific answer right now. You probably get more input than you can digest tonight, but, uh, um. And, and the other, the other, uh, input I get once in a while is just, I also look at where we have wildlife crossings, right? And, and maybe improve signage to, 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 there's a lot of people moving into town. They might not always realize, hey. We're actually so close to the outskirts of town and, and yes, we have, uh, mountain lions and deer and, and bobcats. And coyotes, uh, and wild turkeys, uh, crossing our roads too, right? And then they don't care about speed limits, but we should care that we don't run over wildlife or, uh, other pets. Uh, in, in the area. And I think we can do more in that area.
Councilor, real quick, I just want to make sure we have enough time for anybody else who might have comments and we can come back if you're okay. Sure, yep. Councilmember Borjoli?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Uh, mayor, this is probably before your time, but it would be good to bring this up again. So a couple of years ago, uh, we, uh, purchased, uh, I believe, two electronic signs. And so, uh, one was placed, um, uh. Somewhat close to Cochran and Monterey going south. Uh, coming into downtown where it, these big electronic signs said, um, you know, through traffic. Use Butterfield Road.
I saw those, yes.
So, uh, I know for a fact that worked because I traveled that road two years ago very much. Uh, the other thing that I'm concerned about and, and I'm hoping Chris will place an emphasis on this is. You know, we, we paid for the time synchronization on Butterfield. From three to six, so we can move that traffic faster, uh, from Cochran all the way down to Monterey.
Hmm.
Uh, road. Uh, I, I, I would like to encourage that to be re-implemented, uh, to start, uh, making that flow. Uh, you know, better now. You know, it takes, uh, it takes a long time for the public to realize. That Butterfield is a better road. And if, if it's moving faster. Uh, meaning they're making more lights as they go, uh, they're gonna use that road. And, and if you get that electronic sign back there, uh, where, where it was, you know, saying through traffic. Use Butterfield, you know, again, we can start improving everything now because we already have it. We already paid for it. The council at that time approved it, so, uh, that's my two cents.
But thank you for that. Councilmember Martinez Beltran?
Yeah, so I would again go back to Butterfield. I certainly do not want to be putting kids on the hoods of cars on Butterfield, so I disagree with this. Um, we need to direct traffic from Monterey onto Butterfield where we have no capacity and we have collisions. Many more that have happened on Monterey than have happened on Monterey. So I think we can. Walk and chew gum at the same time. We can address, I've always been supportive of, you know, if we have speeding on Monterey. As my counsel, I mean, for when we looked at the lane closure, I had asked to have a comprehensive plan at that time that looked at. All of the options for slowing traffic on Monterey, which included not only a lane closure, but included, I asked. On seven lane, I asked on stop signs, I asked on speed bumps. We never got that far. It stopped at shutting down lanes, but hopefully we can explore a little bit more on that. Um, and I agree with my colleague. Um, and that that might be a possibility. However, I do not think that we just signal for people to go to Butterfield when we have no capacity. Or ability to protect our kids. Talking about money that we've spent, not just in signals, we've spent. Money investing in those walk paths all along Butterfield. And yet we are exposing our kids. To be hit at huge velocities. So. You know, this is, this is something that we're all gonna take responsibility on if we continue to make this a highway and we have. We're not protecting anybody there. So I really want to look at. What we're doing. We only have so much money and we know that. And that's why I'm so concerned is because. Well, it's great that we can put it on a matrix and I appreciate that we're highlighting it. The reality is, unfortunately. We're a very bare bones budget, you know, begging the county for money. We're, we're trying to figure out. Or, you know, the issues we've got here. So think that we have to be very practical in where we see danger. For our residents to be hurt, especially our little residents. And Butterfield, I am telling you right now, is definitely one of those places. So I would like to make a motion to approve this. With that, I would like to look at some of the things. Um, one, I would like to continue, as, as, uh, Mr. Yukon Yoni has said, continue to look at what we can do. For Butterfield, hopefully that speed. If it's not, what can we do? Look at Malagira, look at, you know, speed bump and options. I definitely think, as my other colleague has said, going to the schools, asking parents, let's ask our teens who drive and bike. And probably will e-bike, um, where they feel unsafe. HOAs, I mean, especially these HOAs who've had to replace some fences. So. Taking in the input that we've heard tonight, I would like to go ahead and move that we approve that.
So we have a motion. I know we have, uh, comments. Let's, uh, we have motion to approve.
And just to clarify, the motion is recommendations number two and three.
Number two and three, fifteen point, uh, two and fifteen point three. Uh, so I collect councilmembers, that was your motion. Okay, very good. We have a second, we have a second. Comments?
Yeah, so, so, and not related to the motion, I, I, I am okay with that, but. Again, what I'd like to see is then when you come back with more details. The, I also want to make sure that, that we understand the pain points across the city, right? Not just downtown and then specifically downtown. Uh, uh, most of us, including parents and so on, they spend their days in the neighborhoods and evenings and so on. That's where the kids play. That, that they know best what the issues are, right? And, and we need, need to look and understand what is going on in each neighborhood. Including the newer neighborhoods that have been built over the past few years. Uh, and not, not focus on collision data or so only, that, that is one data point, but the whole. Point of, for me, this is to prevent collisions. And so when you have zero, zero, collision data, zero. That shouldn't mean there is not an issue in those neighborhoods. There still might be, uh, it's just thankfully we haven't had, uh, uh, an accident or a fatality yet. Uh, also, we should look into where we have bus stations, right? That, that people can cross from one side to the other safely. Uh, uh, the, the pain points, including along hail, where there's no crosswalks, right? And, 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 and to me, that's wrong. And, and I think we need to look into where in our city do we have these, these, uh, uh, gaps? And, and, and what can we do to fix them and by when, right? And so that just as additional feedback. I know you've heard it from me in the past, but it's another opportunity for me to bring this in.
Thank you, councilmember. So we have a motion from councilmember Martinez Beltran, second, but was it Borjoli? Speaking by Borjoli.
Uh, yeah, I did include the roundabouts. I forgot to. And bike had connections.
And I think we've included that as well as the comments that the council has provided us. So as we bring this, the. The draft goals and strategies back as well as the plan back, everything we've taken in tonight, we're gonna try and incorporate as best as we can.
Very good. Thank you. So again, uh, motion by. Very good. Thank you. So again, motion by councilmember Martinez Beltran, second by Borjoli. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. That passes five zero. Thank you, councilman, for your input and questions. Thank you for the presentation. We appreciate it. Yes, we're going to take a five minute break before we move on to, speaking of water, we're going to take a five minute break and we'll come back and talk water.
Updated state rate regulations have allowed Valley Water and others to start looking into actually um doing that um and the um we also looked at the non potable reuse um options at various levels, which um is similar to what happens at at SCRA now. So there were seven options identified and reviewed. Um it says six, but option one has two, so it's one A, one B. So I say seven options. Um and the I'm I'm not going to go through all seven options, but we'd be happy to take questions on all of them. And all these options came from different past planning efforts um and things and as well as um um new opportunities um that have been verified. So um we really um believe that options one and two are the 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 best to continue to stay on the table for us. Um obviously, um as we go forward, Valley Water has taken the lead in this, but the city of Morgan Hill um at the staff level and now at the council level, um will provide considerable feedback, but we do have to work with our partners in Valley Water and Gilroy to figure out most of these unless we were going to try and do something um on our own, which would be very um costly. So um so the the option one is um is the is the new direct potable reuse option. And there's basically two options in option one. One is um that taking portable, taking the recycled water from SCRA, treating it at a higher level and then pumping it back to Morgan Hill um for potable reuse. The other option is um building a um treated water um uh treatment facility here and treating it and putting it back into our system it for uh with uh for potable reuse. Um option two that's identified, it would be using someone else's wastewater. Um so that would be taking water from the treatment plant in San Jose, bringing it down here and using it for non potable reuse. So all those options are expensive. Um as you can see, that the first two options are estimated at a hundred and twenty million to a hundred and fifty million. And the uh the option from San Jose is estimated at eighty million. Obviously, you'd say, okay, well, the eighty million seems like the best bang for our buck. But the eighty, that option requires um another government entity outside of the ones in this room right now to provide a approval and a long term agreement to do that. So that part would maybe a difficult challenge as well. So um what we're recommending tonight um is to take the council's feedback on the plans and the identified options. And um in and city staff will continue to work with um Valley Water, Gilroy um and SCRA um uh as we move forward and um support in support of the the expanding the existing recycled water facilities in at SCRA, but also exploring, continuing to explore the feasible options to bring recycled water to Morgan Hill. Um and then of note, uh Valley Water has received a a federal grant to continue this planning effort to a more detailed level. And um we would support them in that effort um at at from the Morgan Hill staff level as well as the Joint Water Resources Committee. Uh that concludes uh my report. I'd be happy to take questions as I know my teammates from Valley Water would as well.
Very good. Thank you, Chris, and welcome to Valley Water. Appreciate you being here tonight. Any questions, uh Councilmember Spring?
Yeah, uh thank you, Chris. It's good to see you both uh this time in Morgan Hill. Usually I see them at the SCRA meetings in in Gilroy, so. Uh it this presentation looks very familiar to me. Is that the same that was given at SCRA?
Yes.
Okay, I thought so. Yeah, but I I I didn't ask it then. I ask it now. A a couple terms that I can't remember what they stand for. S B W R. South Bay Water, something?
Self cycling.
The so so is is that the name of 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 the San Jose Water Company?
Um no, so the the wastewater treatment plan is called the San Jose, Santa Clara Regional Wastewater Facility, and it serves non potable recycled water to um Milpitas, San Jose and Santa Clara. And that program of recycling water is called the South Bay Water Recycling Program.
Okay, so so for that pipeline, I think what is it? Option one, I think.
Option two.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, uh option two uh for that pipeline. So who would be the entity to work with? The city of San Jose or?
That that's a good question. That would have to be figured out. Um the city of San Jose would definitely have to approve it. Our current agreement that brings water south uh will run out um in twenty twenty seven, right? And um so there would have to be a new agreement. Um all of the wastewater treatment plants are experiencing declining flows because of conservation. So um I mean, that's a good thing, but also a bad thing if you want recycled water. And so, you know, it would have to be reviewed how much water is even available.
Right, right. The 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 reason I'm asking, you you mentioned that might make it less feasible, the more entities are included. And it's not clear clear to me who the entities are uh further up north that we would have to deal with. Is it still Valley Water?
Yes.
Uh is is it uh the Water Company in South San Jose uh that has some name? I used to live down there many years ago and.
The San Jose Water Company?
No, they have another nice oak, something.
Oh, Great Oaks. That's the that their their water retailer like us between between us and San Jose. They would not, they would not be involved. Um Valley Water would likely need to take the lead um from uh in negotiating with San Jose. Um.
And 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 what what is N NPR plus?
You want me to answer?
Yeah, go ahead.
It's non potable reuse enhanced. So basically, um I don't know if you've had a chance to tour our Silicon Valley Advanced Water Purification Center.
Yeah.
Right. So what that facility does is NPR plus. It basically purifies a part of the waste stream, uh a part of the recycled water to make the recycled water a higher quality. So that's what that means.
Basically, the one you get to drink at the end, right?
Well, I mean, the one you get to drink is treated even further, but what what it means is what's going um through the South Bay Water Recycling System is enhanced non potable reuse. We keep it at a, you know, steady quality so that more users can use it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And in my last question i- is Chris, I think I asked it during the SCRA meeting too, but I ask it here again. You know, you know, uh there's this huge potential of we all waste water, right? The whether it it's by flushing it down the drain and that ends up in Gilroy or by uh uh watering our lawns and then plants out there. But there's a lot of water before it even goes into all those pipes, right? If we only could collect it at our homes and then reuse it instead of using the the good water, right? Well, i- isn't that part of reusing water? And then shouldn't we have plans in place to improve that?
Um yes, and I think we have um some policies that support that, whether um and there's all all kinds of different things at every level where it can be at the homeowner's level where you're collecting that runoff. The state's also encouraging us, and I know Valley Water is looking at it in a in kind of separate planning to uh in stormwater capture. So we can capture stormwater before it goes, you know, out to the ocean. So how do we um work on figuring that out? That's kind of separate from the plan we're doing right now. We're really looking at the reuse plan for um for recycled water that's coming from wastewater. There are other opportunities and we wanna we wanna help take advantage of that, and I know Valley Water does this as well, but it's kind of outside of this plan. It's not what the focus of this plan is.
Uh and and that makes sense. So uh which plan would it be part of then?
Um at our at our level, we don't have a formal plan on that. We've we've done some things like with the grant we received for the Butterfield Basin to try and uh capture and uh return water to the ground is something we've done. We don't have a formal plan. I Valley Water, I know, is exploring options, but I don't know if you have a plan for the that the stormwater capture.
Um so I I heard various things. I also heard sort of gray water. So I I can talk about a variety of things. So in our um twenty forty water supply master plan, the one that is currently active and that we're updating, we do have a goal of about a thousand acre feet per year of uh additional stormwater capture. We already do capture a lot of the runoff in in these watersheds with our ten existing reservoirs. And so any sort of additional stormwater capture will likely have um small to moderate um water supply benefits. Uh we are looking, we have several rebates for rain gardens, rain barrels, as well as gray water. So um at the homeowner level, there are a lot of things homeowners can do and get rebates for. And then we're looking at something called flood managed aquifer recharge. It is a big thing in the Central Valley, but here it will likely, like I said, be a a smaller benefit. Um where we are looking at, we did a pre-feasibility study to look at capturing um runoff, especially from hillsides on open um land or agricultural land. Um and so we're developing a a pilot and have a grant to do that as well.
Uh they did. Thank you. This helped, and may maybe this is where we had the discussion, not at SCRA. I might have confused two meetings there. But but at the end of the day, who has jurisdiction to impose something for the city? It is it's the city, right? It's not Valley Water.
Uh right. So we 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 have in our building department has done a lot to help uh in supporting um permitting for gray water systems. It's not something that's taken advantage of very much because it's not super easy to do. Um we partner on um water conservation rebates primarily with Valley Water. We can impose um regulations to people within the city. Um but I think most of this work is more incentive type work than imposing regulations on, you know, existing existing homes. We definitely, along with what state requirements are, do impose restrictions on water conservations on new development. And then we do have a retrofit at resale um ordinance um for water conservation. But we can do these things um at all these different levels. But because where we are as an area, as a city, some of these things are really not going to be effective for us to do versus Valley Water doing, who has the entire county to uh work on.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. No further questions. Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else? Councilmember Lebers?
Thank you. Thank you for the report. I um looked at all the maps that were included in this. I noticed that in Morgan Hill, we have two perk ponds, the Hill Road and the Main Avenue one. How did they play into this? And if we go with this, would we have to expand either one of those? Or are they large enough? Because I know Maine is tiny. How do they play into this whole thing? I understand it.
Well, they they so right now they're just used for groundwater recharge, if I'm not mistaken. With in the planning, um there are some different options in seven that talk about using those ponds. I did Dave, you want to?
So sure. Hi, Dave Tucker. Um so indirect potable reuse or putting in ponds or or reservoirs is something that we have looked at initially. Um uh but one of the things that we we, one of our prime directors is actually protecting groundwater. So anything that we put into these ponds for indirect potable has to go through about the same level of treatment that you would almost see for a direct potable reuse. So it's very expensive water to produce. Um and we'd also have to get it to where we need it to use it in this case. So depending on where we um manufacture this purified water, say we did it at the SCRA facility, we'd have to to pump it up fourteen miles to to use it here.
All right. Thank you. I I understand that now. I was confused a little bit about that. So so at this time, what we have is sufficient because it it's not feasible to really pump it back up here, right?
Yeah, well, the it is pumping the purified water is one of the options that we're still looking at, but wasn't listed for uh the to be used for groundwater recharge. So one of the option one and option two don't include uh the ponds, if I'm not mistaken.
Right. Thank you for the clarification.
Uh, Councilmember Borjoli.
Thank you, Mayor. Um which of these options, one and two, um if if chosen, will uh uh pump water into our groundwater?
None, none of the options are, options one and two aren't proposing putting water into the the groundwater. So neither of them. Option two talks about bringing the NPR plus for reuse within the the city through a distribution system that would be similar to what uh SCRA has in Gilroy.
So so one of the one of the limitations or the challenges of putting water back into the groundwater.
Quick, I'm sorry. You might be speaking directly into the microphone, so folks can be back in here. Thanks. Is this better? Yeah, there you go. Okay.
So one of the challenges is uh you you have to make sure that there's uh proper separation before before where you're putting this reused water back into the system uh to the closest well. And the problem we have in South County is uh wells everywhere. So it makes it very, very difficult to find an area where we can actually put it in the ground and still meet state regulations for that separation.
And and that's why some several of the options, you know, three through six um are not as feasible because we've looked at that.
So actually, that's where I was going. Anything that we put in our system, we have to make sure it's pure. Otherwise, we'll contaminate our system.
Correct.
So how are we going to? So are you saying none of this is going to put water into our system?
No, so it's the options that the the option one, the advanced purification is using the new, would be using the new state regulations to look at.
Chris, I'm sorry, Kim. Need to stop the clock. Thank you.
It'd be using the the updated state regulations to do exactly what Christian was talking about, that drinking water that you're you're drinking at the their advanced uh water purification facility, it could become drinking water. It could become the water that we put into water systems, including Morgan Hills, and that's what people are looking at. We're not saying we're going to do that. We've we're saying that's one option we want to keep on the table. So because it's it's just cut, it's cutting edge and and it and that's what, you know, Valley Water is exploring right now.
So I've seen the Silicon Valley one, and I'm confident in that system, the purified, you know, plus water. But uh I'm trying to figure out what why are we do, what's the advantages of doing this if we're not going to uh recharge our system?
Well, we going to use. We would use it. It would go into and mix with the water we're pulling out of the ground in theoretic theoretically down the road, and it would go into our tanks and reservoirs and could be used in people's homes.
Okay, I'm still confused uh about that, but I I'll let I'll let that go. Okay, thank you.
Uh I I just to to clarify, the water, the 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 intent of the purified water is at the state level and what Valley Water will look at is to say, you don't have to put it in the ground. You don't have to. You can mix it into your water systems because it's as good as water you're putting out of the ground, and it replaces having to pull water out of the ground.
So you're saying it that this will go into some of our tanks?
That it could. That that that's what would be that what would be looked at. That's what that's what the new, that's what's being looked at at the state level and what Valley Water is looking at.
Okay, now now I understand it. Thank you.
No more questions. Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Martinez Beltran.
Um so um we've gone over this already. Chris, I don't want to take too much. I just, could you, for purposes for, you know, looking at option five, I've had some questions about well, that's seventy five million. Could you talk through that a little bit?
That option five.
Yes. Which is also low likelihood. Feasibility, medium low.
Almost there, sorry.
I think it's page three sixty eight.
Oh, yeah.
Three sixty seven.
Yeah, so this would be um just taking the um water from SCRA and pumping it back to Morgan Hill for non potable reuse. So um so what that would mean is. Yeah, so that would be the same level of treatment that SCRA does now, if I'm not mistaken. Be pumped up, and then we would need a distribution facility that could take that water to be used to water the grass at the O C, taking the farmers around the outskirts of Morgan Hill or industrial uses, the landscape areas, and could be used just like the water in SCRA SCRA uses. The real difficulty with that, and uh uh David can get into better numbers than me, is SCRA uses almost all of its recycled water in the summer. That's when those that's when those uses for fields or ag are needed. So we don't have enough recycled water to make that a feasible use because if we built that system, there might not be any water to pump up for those uses.
Thank you. That's all.
Very good. Thank you. Um Chris, you know, I got a couple of questions for you here on on a couple of things here. I I I'm under, you know, under section three point one, one talks about the north system distribution pipelines. Really kind of calls out about fourteen customers. Uh primarily in the Gilroy area. Some of those are public facilities. Is it something that uh and and is there, is that money sold to these customers? I'm sorry, not money. Is the water, I'm sorry, is the water sold to these customers? I mean, it goes, I think it goes to Gilroy Gardens, goes to.
Customers purchase the water.
Yes, pardon me.
But customers do purchase.
They do purchase the water. And and is there potential for other customers or is it limited to about the fourteen or fifteen that they have?
So that's, as Chris mentioned, apparently the uh the all the water that we make or or manufacture at SCRA during the summertime is used by those fourteen customers. So uh to expand uh the demand in South County, um we would have to use that water at other times. And typically, uh the water is used for irrigation, so it's a it's a summertime use.
So for trying to bring something back up to Morgan Hill, obviously would be ineffective for us during the summer summertime. It's primarily spring, late spring, probably call wintertime.
Yes.
Okay. The um under three point two, where it says plant recycled water systems calls out uh talks about uh service to the most viable customers. Who are those most viable customers?
So that would be any large uh customer, uh whether it be a school, a cemetery, uh a large water user, a park that's not being uh uh serviced right now. Gilroy Gardens would be a good example. Um we have pipe that is close, uh but we don't have supply that we could use to give them water right now.
Okay, so you've got you've got potential, that would be potential customers that yet are unable to be served because of the lack of water. That's much, okay. So people need to eat up. Is that what you're basically saying? Flush more often? Is that what we're looking at? Create create a little extra? Hello?
Well, as as uh person I alluded to earlier, you know, with conservation, you know, wastewater flows are actually going down. And for those that of you are on the SCRA board, you know that uh land uh wastewater is way down from what it was five years ago, which is one of the reasons why the uh recent capital improvements are are much different than what they were um envisioned earlier.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Um under five point two, um yeah, just asking a question. Is recycled, is it, is it subsidized? Is recycled water subsidized? Is the um these customers, they're paying full price. It's being covered?
So recycled water is discounted from the the uh water that you could pump out of the ground? So it is subsidized?
Have you to about what degree? Is it uh is it a large amount?
Yeah, it might be ten percent. It's it's not significant, but if you're a large water user, it is significant.
It's basically indexed to our groundwater rates.
Yep.
So it's a it's a little bit lower, I believe, about ten percent lower. Um and that incentivizes the use of recycled water. It does have a different quality. And uh some users have to adjust how they, you know, what what kind of plants they plant. And, you know, golf courses sometimes have challenges with with the type of grass that can take this kind of water. So it incentivizes them to take the water. Um but it's not a very big discount.
Got it.
But it also reduces the cost of the customer to have to pump it if they have their own well, for example.
Got it. Okay. I don't see, it's similar in the report. It talked about an agreement between, I don't know if it was Valley Water and Silver Creek? Or was it San Jose and Silver Creek?
It's called the Silver Creek um agreement, and it's between um San Jose and Valley Water.
And something about it looking, it may expire. Is it twenty twenty seven?
That's correct.
And is there, is that a, is there, is that a concern for us in South County if that somehow is not, there's no new agreement there?
Um it would be a concern if option, the option to bring that water further south would be something that is chosen. And, you know, we don't act on um renegotiating the agreement.
Okay, so that's a that's a station that that would be part of the plan to pump water south, is that what you're saying?
But right, it's it's that having that agreement would be a prerequisite to that option.
Got it. We're looking to you. Is that? Okay, all right.
What Silver Creek agreement does is it it provides us with the opportunity to wholesale water uh south of Calpine.
Okay.
Um you see here.
Okay, I think I'm good. Thank you. We want to open this uh to, if no other questions, we'll, Councilmember.
I forgot what I was asked about. Um Chris, could you explain for our ground basin, is that not shared for Morgan Hill and Gilroy?
So and real quickly, Councilmember, I want, if we can use that as the last question, because we do want to go to the public.
Okay.
So um Morgan Hill pulls water from two uh separate aquifers and basins. So um the the southern, south of Cochrane, we share with uh Gilroy and the South County. It's important to remember, we we share, we all pull water out of there, but uh both cities combined don't pull as much water out as the people outside the cities, which includes the ag uses.
So I guess I'm just trying to address, but if if you've got Gilroy Oaks businesses using it, everybody's kind of tapping this one area, right?
Tapping the same groundwater, there's a lot of straws going into the basin. Yes, we're we're all tapping it, and it's important to remember that with all those uses, the natural recharge of our rainwater does not recharge that basin enough for all the uses. Valley Water brings in water um from San Luis, from the Delta, all the way here to the Mojonee Channel um that they put water in the ground for us in South County to make sure that in addition to what um rainwater natural recharge we get, they're putting extra water in to recharge the same way they bring water in to provide to San Jose. So we are dependent on our, the basins are dependent on them bringing that water in.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And we will now go to uh public comment, open public comment. Anybody?
Yes, Doug Meierhead.
Good evening, uh city council and city staff and water district staff. Uh my name is Doug Meierhead. I live in Morgan Hill. All I want is the alternative action where you choose to provide further direction to staff on recycled water. That starts with a sense of urgency. Conservation is only a solution if we have water to conserve. The master plan from twenty fifteen, Gilroy had recycled water and would get more infrastructures produced and used more. Morgan Hill had no recycled water and was judged to have insufficient need to justify the cost. Our plan is essentially the same as twenty fifteen, except that there are more options that could be, no, not will be considered. But there is still no actual plan to produce or require water to recharge our groundwater basin. That basin is our only source of water and depends on imported water for recharge. But there can be little or no imported water when there is a long term drought. We also have a right to develop local supply and not have that blocked by priority use of our wastewater for SCRA operation. In my ideal world, Morgan Hill would capture and reuse our wastewater to recharge our groundwater basin to provide local resilience under local control. I do not need to remind you, but I will, the council has advocated for local control on other issues. We also need to be clear about the financial and political costs to have reused water as opposed to having no water at all. We need to rebut the propaganda in the staff report that a reason for producing more recycled water at SCRA is the recycled water used around Gilroy reduces extraction from our shared groundwater basin. The implication is that the basin is a lake and that water taken out in Gilroy reduces what is available in Morgan Hill. The implication is that the basin is a leak and that water taken out in Gilroy reduces what is available in Morgan Hill. There is a slight downward gradient to the basin, so there is some slow migration of water southward. Until you perform tracer studies and show me noticeable flows, I just see this claim as nothing but an attempt to make us feel better about having no source of recycled water in Morgan Hill. Closing section of the new plan named Morgan Hill Recycled Water Options Comparison says, City of Morgan Hill intends to continue to work in partnership with Valley Water to determine the best path forward. This is just more, we're working on it, or who, or when, or why, no sense of urgency. This is not acceptable. For fun, let's think about this fundamental truth said by Governor Governor Newsom at his press conference during the April snow survey. The water system in California was designed for a world that no longer exists. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Any other public comments?
I have no more speakers.
Very good. We'll bring it back for council discussion. Any comments, Councilmember Martinez Beltran?
I would like if we could, if Chris could address, you know, what is? What is the? The plan, the when are we looking, our timeframe? I know that we are certainly challenged with funding. But what is what is the immediate plan?
So we don't have a silver bullet option to bring recycled water to Morgan Hill. There there's not an easy path and and recycled water is not going to be the silver bullet that solves all of our water issues. We we have to look at all issues with conservation, recycled water, you know, working with Valley Water and ensuring that that, you know, that there is regional supplies, you know, that are we have reservoirs to support this. So this is one thing we have to work on. But it's not, it it's in concert with all those other other efforts. And Valley Water is the groundwater management agency. We aren't, we are not. So we have to work with them. So what the plan for recycled water, it ties with our urban water management plan, which ties to Valley Water's urban water management plan, to our water system master plan. So in all the efforts, it's a combined effort to ensure we have a water supply, working with our our partners to do that, not only a Valley Water, but we have to work at as Mr. Muirhead explained, at the state level, because this is not a local issue that any one jurisdiction can solve. So with that said, our plan for recycled water is to work with Valley Water on the next phase of exploration on these options, which they have grant funding to do. They're here to listen to the council tonight to hear what the council has to say on these options and the community, as Mr. Muirhead said. And our step will be our next step on our end is to work with David and Kristen on on that piece to really identify what might be feasible for us to do. I mean, if we we said we're gonna, we're gonna do recycled water ourselves, I mean, you you could tell us to to do it, but without Valley Water, even if we had the dollars to do it, we're not going to just be able to recycle the water and put it in the ground. We have to work with Valley Water because the groundwater is their responsibility. So we need, we need to to work through this and the next step is to continue the planning and identify feasible options. At the same time, looking at all the other things that that we're doing and Valley Water is doing to ensure we have resilience and our water supply.
You can also, can I just jump in real quick? Do you mind?
Can I? I want to address.
Go right ahead. I'll go in after you.
So you know, listening to what Chris has said, I guess what I'm interested in and grateful that you're both here tonight. And I do serve on scraw and so I am familiar with this. We are interested in in doing the recycled water. I understand that you do have some funding. How can we position ourselves as a city to be one of the front runners to work with you in partnership to look at some of the the pilot programs that you're doing so that we can advance this here in Maureen Hill? We've been looking at this since 2015. We are ready and able. And I'm curious to know, you know, what is it that that you would need from this council, from the city of Maureen Hill to make a commitment that we would love to be in partnership on this effort?
Well, I'm not the right person to make commitments. That would be our board. So I think Morgan Hill has been a great partner and we we want to continue to work on the feasibility study and look at what the feasible options are. We will continue to work to through the Joint Water Resource Committee and the Technical Working Group at the staff level. We we do have a lot of challenges about bringing recycled water to to Morgan Hill because there isn't very much water to begin with either either direction, really. And as Chris said, it's not really the silver bullet either. We need to look at a sustainable water supply more broadly. And we would love for the Morgan Hill community and the council to engage with our water supply master plan 2050. Our board has directed us to come up specifically with a South County strategy to make sure that there's a sustainable water supply all the way to 2050. So we are looking at specific projects for additional groundwater recharge as well as the flood managed aquifer recharge I talked about earlier that would specifically be in South County. At the same time, we're trying to keep rates affordable. We have a lot of rate pressures and the rates in South County are the most affordable in the county. Because, you know, here we have much less infrastructure, but we do actively manage the groundwater basin to make sure it is sustainable. So I think that, you know, continued engagement through the committee and and with the staff as well as into the broader issues of the water supply master plans, what I would say. And then, you know, our our board are the ones that make commitments.
Thank you. We would love to have that.
Clock is a is a running clock.
We we'd love to be prized of, you know, funding and pilot programs that you're doing, looking at funding at the federal level as well and seeing, you know, who we can partner with there as well. But thank you so much for being here. And hopefully we can move this initiative forward.
We on page nine of the report, there is actually six reports listed dating back to 2000. If if this report ends up on that list five years from now and we've done nothing, this will be very, very frustrating. The State Water Resource Board in December approved the plan we talked about with purified water. And I'm assuming I'm assuming Valley Water was anticipating that approval and has been working on funding for working with the federal government, I would assume. That's obviously with what we're talking about, her $80 million is going to require more funding than what we can find out of our region. And so I again, I need to tell you guys, I know you already do that. You're you're seeking funding from other other sources. But what I would like to see as part of the study, at least to come back to us with is a potential of sort of a Plan Two A, which is purified water, purified water also coming from San Jose. As opposed to, yes, I know that's purified is recycled anyway, but there's another option of of potentially bringing that down as part of this plan. Another comments, Councilmember Spring?
Yeah, I I you know, I I understand and I share the frustration that Mr. Muirhead has has mentioned many times. Unfortunately, I don't see see the key answer ahead of me either yet, right? There there's no point of of spending 100 million on a pipeline if there is not enough recycled water to pump up here. What's the point of doing that, right? I I don't know how the situation looks like in the San Jose area if they have a surplus of recycled water that they would pump down here. Just having a pipeline with no water that that could be pumped, what's the point, right? So so, yes, we might, we can approve this, but I think the likelihood of something to happen, unless we 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 manage to to get more recycled water from Gilroy or South San Jose, it's not going to happen. I think it would be a tremendous waste of money. So so the answers for me are somewhere else, probably that that is more just feasible down the road. It's just and then it starts with all of us. How can we improve our homes and 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 those who use a lot of water? How can we make sure that water doesn't literally go go down the drains by especially during the winter months and and gets lost? How can we somehow collect that when we have the rain and the water or the gray water that we use and collect that at our homes or in facilities somehow? I don't know what the technical answers are to that, but I think that is the future, right? Do we? It rains a lot sometimes here in our area, but then that water, I don't know where it ends up. It goes somewhere and and if and I think we could collect more of that our way. I think I see you nodding and and that's what I'd like to see answers, right? More common sense, obvious answers and not just work on hypothetical scenarios that that seem so unlikely that they I think we will be there in a few years because it's not going to happen, right? The the we're not going to poop a lot more and and fill those squaw and and create the water, right? This is not going to happen.
We to your point, yeah, I mean, I think what the gray water capture, other things will be beneficial. It's not going to solve our problem by any means close to what we need to do. Putting a pipe in the ground isn't something that Valley Waters is unfamiliar with. You have, I think, inactive pipes in Gilroy. Near Eagle Ridge in the report, it actually talks about inactive. So putting a pipe in the ground for future use is much more affordable today than it will be 10 years from now. So that's my point there. Well, we might be. We we see a decrease in in water due to conservation. It could change in five or 10 years. If if our community is growing as it is, we're building more homes, we're going to see more activity. So there's potential there. Any other comments? There being none, we will entertain a motion.
Move to approve the draft plan.
Got a motion by Councilmember Martinez Beltran, second by Councilmember Borgioli. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There being none, that passes five zero. Thank you, folks. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Chris. While while we're transitioning, I'll just remind us nine o'clock and there are three more items.
Yes, so we need to. Do we want to extend that for another hour to say 11 o'clock? I would assume that's what we're going to need to get through these three items. We're not going to get through in an hour. I don't I don't anticipate. Anybody with me?
Could you repeat tap again, please?
What we're looking at is we've got to figure out if we're going to stay beyond 10. And with what we have before us, I think we, you know, we could be close. I mean, I think we need to look at least till 1030.
So we have 17, 18, and 19.
Right.
And I'd like to get, I'd like to get a direction from maybe our city manager on what she feels time wise we would need. Because i- if it's going to be 11 o'clock, I'm I'm just not willing to, because we've been here since five. So.
City manager?
I think so. Item number 17, we're going to do an overview of the budget and just how to how to read the budget document format. So that should be fairly quick. And then items 18 and 19 are returning as council agenda follow up items. So and so I'm thinking 1015 to 1030 would be sufficient.
Yeah, would you would you say let's say 1030 and we'll shoot for we'll shoot for nine?
Okay.
1030, what do you give it 1030?
I know.
Yes, definitely not longer than 11. I I have to get up to San Jose in the early morning.
We're gonna then we're going to shoot for 1030 and do our best to get there. Okay, very good. Thank you. Then we are moving to item 17, introduce the recommended 2024, 2025 and 2025, 2026 Mayo operating budget. Please take it away. We're already at questions. Excellent. Okay. Any questions?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, community members and teammates that are joining us tonight. My name is Monica Delgado. I'm the budget manager. And we honor tonight of introducing the city managers recommended fiscal years 24, 25, 25, 26, operating and fiscal years 24, 25 through 2930, capital improvement program budgets. Budget process commenced in February this year with the city council's goal setting workshop. This past Friday, May 3, the city manager's recommended budget was released to the council and the community. Tonight is an introduction to the city manager's recommended budget to help council members and the community navigate the budget document. Next week, the budget workshop is when we'll take a dive into the dollars and cents. The city council will then hold a public hearing and adoption of the recommended budget on June 19. As we adopt a biannual budget in the off year, we'll do an in depth budget review and mid cycle budget update to the council. Some key date, let's see. Here's a look at what we'll be going over tonight. Sustainable Morgan Hill and council priorities, how to navigate the budget document, an overview of the recommended budget and next steps. Our vision for the city of Morgan Hill is to sustain a safe, inclusive, socially responsible, environmentally conscious and economically sound community. The council's ongoing and annual strategic priorities are the guiding light of the budget development. They include enhancing public safety and quality of life, protecting the environment and preserving open space and agricultural land, maintaining and enhancing infrastructure, supporting our youth, seniors and entire community, fostering a positive organizational culture, preserving and cultivating public trust, preserving our community history, enhancing diversity and inclusiveness and advocating for local, regional and state legislative initiatives. Specific to fiscal year 2425, the city council strategic priorities are fiscal sustainability, sustainable housing and homelessness, community engagement, economic development and tourism, transportation and healthy community. As you may have seen, the recommended budget document is quite a publication. We have it available for review on the city's website, either through PDF or flipping book. I'm going to give you a quick demo on how to navigate the budget document through flipping book. When you go onto our website, in the finance section under budget and financials, you'll see here the recommended budget document. And click on the flipping book link.
Are you intending for them to see it? No, I am. Kim, could you help out so that we can see the website?
We can we go on without having to see that?
Yeah, I I think we may have to. Just a quick overview. So if you click in the flipping book, you'll see just at the very bottom, you'll see a link for like a table of contents. And that's the best way to navigate the document. You'll see all the sections on your left hand side and everything is linked. So if you go, you know, from the from the beginning, out of the table of contents and you can just, you know, get through the document, that's probably the best place. Okay. So I think.
No pressure, but attention.
Okay, so because we're doing this a little bit different, it's not adjusting Sergio.
Yeah, we see we see it on our end.
Okay, because it's not, it's still there. Okay, so I'm going to turn our attention to the budget summary and the assumptions we've used to put the recommended budget together. In developing the manual budget, we have carefully assessed our revenue projections to align with the city council's priorities. While we anticipate slight growth in property tax revenue, we don't assume the level of growth we have seen in previous years. Other revenue sources such as sales tax and TOT remain slight. This budget reflects our measured approach to slow revenue growth with increased costs in both personnel and supplies and services. Other items such as electricity have grown. Other items such as electricity have grown drastically over the past few years. The cost of electricity is projected to increase by $1.5 million or 52% for all funds in fiscal year 24, 25, from just a few years ago. To put this in perspective, the increase in the general fund for electricity is enough to hire an additional three police officers.
I'd like first to keep, keep going if we could.
Included in the recommend bud, recommended budget is staffing operating costs for the third fire station, addition of two police officers, one in each fiscal year, and continuation of $1 million annual funding from the general fund to the street maintenance and rehabilitation program. With all this, as proposed, please remember that what you have in front of you now is only a two, is, is a two-year spending plan that has some flexibility built into it, especially as it relates to staffing. For example, as vacancies arise, if the economy is not in our, is not in our favor, then we can always revisit our spending plan. So the total recommended budget, um, for fiscal year 24, 25 is 205.9 million, broken up to the left there in operations and capital improvement. And for 25, 26 is 254.4 million dollars. From a citywide perspective, most, most of our sources of funds come from the enterprise funds, which are our utilities, uh, our wastewater and water funds. The second largest source there is from the general fund, which can be broken down further into taxes such as property tax, hotel tax, sales tax, and fees for service, such as our CRC, um, membership revenue. On the other hand, or use of funds, project expenditures make up the largest percentage of expenditures of our, our capital, uh, project expenditures. In a subset of total citywide expenditures, the general fund has a spending plan of about $62 million of the 205.9, 205.9 total. Employee services make up most of general fund expenditures. Here's a list of enhancements that are included in the recommended budget, some of which I mentioned previously as it relates to the general fund. Others not impacting the general fund include the addition of three FTE in our utilities divisions, and the result of the fee study analysis and development services, the addition of two FTE, as well as some reclassifications. Has a chart most of you are familiar with. This is our general fund reserves forecast graph. The yellow line is the fund balance goal of 25% of revenues. The red line is the fund, fund balance minimum level. The blue line indicates where we were at goal-setting, and the green line indicates where we project we'll end this forecast period. We want to highlight some accomplishments that represent a fine job the city has attained. We are one of the safest cities in the county and state. We have excellent recreation services with one of the highest cost recoveries in the country. We have well-maintained streets and roads with a PCI rating of 75, and we have a triple, triple-A credit rating from S&amp;P. Yet, Morgan Hill has the lowest per capita tax revenue when compared to all other cities in the county, as shown on this graph with Morgan Hill to the far left. Going away from the general fund and looking at the development services funds, which is made up of planning, building, and land development engineering, the fund is still anticipated an ongoing annual deficit. The negative impact of high interest rates has caused a slowdown in commercial development resulting in a reduction in revenue. Included in the recommendation is an interfund loan from the general fund to the development services fund of approximately $1 million in the current fiscal year. It is worth noting that an interfund, an interfund loan of approximately $2.9 million was envisioned in the FY 2021, 21, 22 budget cycle. However, higher revenue collection coupled with conservative spending allowed the need for the loan to be pushed out for several years. The recommended budget reflects the support provided by the general fund to the development services fund through the elimination of the general, of the general administrative charges for internal administrative services such as finance, HR, legal services, et cetera. This is to help offset some of the services that our development services team provides that are not fully cost-recovering. As expenditures continue to outpace revenues for the foreseeable future, it is necessary to revisit the development services fee schedule. Staff expects to bring forward to the city council an analysis of the development services fee schedule after the adoption of this budget. Included in the recommended budget is the city's capital improvement program budget. This can also be found on the city's website in both PDF and flipping book formats. The CIP is the primary tool that we use to plan for major capital projects and acquisitions. It identifies major capital needs over a multi-year forecast period and reflects the overall priorities of the city. Some highlights include the first phase of the Butterfield Park, uh, our pavement rehabilitation program, groundwater wells, new sewer trunk line, recreation facility expansion, and renovation. Details about each of these projects can be found in the CIP document. Then tonight is meant, uh, as an introduction to the city manager's recommended budget. We'll get into the dollars and cents next week at the city council budget workshop on May 22nd at 5:00 PM here in the council chambers. And then budget public hearing and adoption is scheduled for June 19th at 6:00 PM here as well. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. I want that, uh, again, next week we'll dig deeper into this. Uh, any, any questions by the council? Councilmember Borzoli?
I just have a, uh, well, uh, an ask.
Sure.
And the ask is, uh, can you send us a direct link for the PDF and the flipping book rather than us going to the website? Uh, just to make it easy on all of us that, that we can start studying that right now?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
That would be helpful. Thank you. Okay.
Councilmembers, please. Yeah, just briefly, I, I, I don't want to go into details, but, but, uh, done that a couple of times now, now, and, and what I always miss is really understanding the, the options and priorities. The, including, you know, additional staff, which one is more important than the other? Not, not every position is on the same level of priority, right? And if you may be in preparation of the workshop with the council, can come back and give us some options or say, hey, this is really the must, and these are more, the nice to have. Uh, this is our number one priority, and, and this is our number nine priority. So that, uh, otherwise we end up making the calls on your behalf instead of you kind of letting us know what the cities, uh, you as city manager think that the priorities ought to be, right? It cannot be everything, uh, most likely at the, be at the same level of priority. Uh, I, I think we, I, I'd like to understand some options, right? Uh, you know, we can go left or right, and then what's in between? Uh, instead of just looking at the document and say, okay, sounds good, let's approve it, right? Does that make sense? I, I know it's a little bit more work, but I, 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 I miss where we can actually make a call, right? Uh, as, as, as a council member versus just accepting the whole thing as presented. And, and instead of us spending a lot of time, then, then next week, if you maybe can think through it a little bit beforehand and say, okay, here are options. Uh, but if we don't do this, uh, uh, then this, this means this, or if you do this, then this, maybe we have to, to let go of this. Is, is that feasible? Is it asking for too much?
I think it's feasible.
Okay, thank you. Very good. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Martinez Beltran?
Thank you, Mayor. I, um, I just heard you said that we'd be revisiting the fee schedule after the adoption. I'm wondering why that's not ahead of the adoption? I just don't think it'll be ready at that point. I think we're still, it's still in process. Okay. Um, and then the other thing I wanted to ask was, mine was to the, um, capital improvements program and providing some options there. What do we know is going to be done that we have funds for, that we're partnering for with funding? And what are some of the, the, um, capital improvement projects that we may not need to pursue or be able to pursue, um, if we're looking at such a tight budget? So I would love to have some of those options come back as well in addition to, you know, um, what my colleague has stated, so that, again, we're looking at the capital improvement program and the projects that we have funded, as we know, the projects that are shovel-ready or projects that we have, um, grants for or funding. But projects that we don't have, that's really coming out of our general fund, is not funded by enterprises. Anyway, I would like to have some of those options that we can look at.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Lebers?
Do come in.
Borzoli?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, so I'd like to just go on, uh, something, uh, Councilmember Spring, uh, alluded to. And, uh, one of my prior questions to the meeting relative to, uh, dispatching, uh, as opposed to giving it to the police department, do you recall that? Uh, so, uh, that was a real good answer that you gave. You gave, um, you know, the, the reasons why we should contract this out to this agency that does it as opposed to bringing it in-house into the PD, uh, is. And you just laid it right out and, and it made perfect sense. Uh, so I, I, I think if you keep on that relative to what Councilmember Spring is, is indicating, it would really help us out a little bit in our decision-making process. So that's all I wanted to make a comment on. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Very good. Thank you. I have no questions. We'll open it to public comment. Do we have any public comment?
No speakers.
There being no, uh, comment, we'll close public comment. I don't think there's any further discussion at the council level, and so, uh, there's no action here. This is just being received, so.
Can I just say what a great job you did with that? I love the flipping. I love the links. I love, I had, it was just, it's great. I love the page flipping sound.
Flipping good. Yeah. Thank you. Okay, uh, this is to item 18. Is that where we're headed now? Yes, item 18, provide direction regarding remote public comment at city council meetings. Uh, uh, Christina?
Yes. Yes. All right, um, so I'll be presenting this item. Um, and so this is, uh, providing direction regarding remote public comments at city council meetings. So this item was presented at the council meeting on December 6th as a future council-initiated agenda item, and the council directed staff to explore options to allow, uh, for public comment on Zoom. And a conversation about remote public comment was held during the city council's goal-setting workshop, um, at which there was not a majority consensus to allow remote public comment. This item is returning after direction from the council at the March 6th meeting to be heard by all members of the council. So this is basically the third step of the future agenda council-initiated items related to remote public comments. And so by way of background, back in October of last year, um, we had a council meeting where there were hateful and hostile comments, um, that were made by people participating on Zoom, anti-Semitic, anti-gay, so forth. And this occurred not only in Morgan Hill but throughout the nation. And so in response, public comment on Zoom was no longer allowed. And so several factors contributed this, to this decision, promoting a safe and inclusive space, from, uh, protection of vulnerable communities, ensuring efficient meetings. And so through this change, we aim to strike a balance between promoting free speech and protecting the safety and dignity of all participants in public meetings. Uh, the Brown Act, which governs pu- uh, public access to government meetings, requires cities to offer the public a chance, uh, to comment at in-person or at public sessions. Um, and so, uh, we continue to do that, having, uh, the public come in person to council meetings or provide public comment in advance of public meetings. And so this evening, we are seeking direction from council on whether to allow public comments. Um, if council does want to consider allowing public comments, then we would seek directions on next step, if, next steps, if the council wants to put a registration or verification process in place. And so with that, I would, um, turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor, for any questions from the council.
Very good. Any questions from the council regarding this item? Councilmember Borzoli?
So, um, it, it's no secret, um, how I feel about this. I just don't feel we should take the chance relative to having any hate speech. I think we need to make a stand, uh, going forward, we're complying with the Brown Act.
Councilmember, I think, I think at this point, this is, uh, questions?
So I'm, I'm getting to my question.
Very good.
So the question is, i- i- if you put any, uh, verification system in, number one, it's going to cost us money. Number two, it's resource impacted. Number three, we, we just don't have right now the funds. I, I believe we don't have the funds to do this, and we're working very thin on what we have right now, and we have to be careful going forward. Uh, I, I'm certainly not willing to, uh, put any monies into this because we don't need it. So, did you come up with a, a figure for those restrictions that you're talking about?
So the staff report lays out three different options. Um, some of them cost money, others don't. Um, but it is important to note that we can't prohibit speakers from using assumed or false names, and none of the options, um, you know, uh, that are listed, uh, stop workarounds, and we may still experience hate speech even if we do put in place one of the options.
Yeah, so no guarantee?
No guarantees.
That, that's it, Mayor. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Spring?
Do, do, I, I understand, stand the concerns, but isn't it also true that anyone could come in here during the public comment period and say whatever they want? And, and as long as it's not disrupting the meeting, uh, it wouldn't, it would be possible?
Hate speech is protected by the First Amendment, just like any other form of speech. The only thing that's prohibited is, is speech that's, um, likely to incite violence.
Yeah, the only other thing that I would add is that what we were seeing, um, during this time and what other cities were seeing was that people were calling from all over the place and using technology, we assume, to be able to figure out when council meetings are and then to, you know, zoom in and, and make their public comments.
And I, I just said, I, I was at the Allee of California Cities, um, City Attorney's Conference last week, and it was a topic of discussion, and some of the cities that had gotten, um, hate speech comments around the same time we did but did not stop, um, remote public comment have gotten the hate speech, um, returning.
Good. Yeah, okay, thank you. Councilmember Lebers?
Um, did you survey the cities of Santa Clara County on whether they allow Zoom or not?
Um, I think previously the clerk's office, um, did some surveying to see what cities were doing.
Does anyone kind of off the top of their head know?
Yeah, I don't know that, I can, I can answer that. I belong to the Cities Association. We've, that's been a topic of discussion there too, and some do, some don't. I, I don't know the actual number, but it's, it's.
In some cities, uh, from the get-go after COVID, don't allow, you know, Zoom public comment.
And nothing to do with the hate speech.
Exactly.
They dropped it because we never had it before. Okay, thank you.
Everybody asked a question?
No, I haven't.
Please, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to clarify, so we enjoy, and I'm, I'm sorry for my colleagues who've heard these questions before, but, um, we do enjoy the option to use remote privilege, uh, access to city council meetings, correct? As council members. Um, yes, there, there are, um, restrictions, um, you know, about how and when it is allowed. Um, and Dawn can speak more to those.
So we've gone back to, to the days before COVID when, in order, there are some exceptions if, um, for extraordinary circumstances. It would allow council members to, I guess, if they would have, um, so if a council member is ill and unable to attend a council meeting, um, they can, up to two times, they can, participate remotely without opening up their home to the public. In those circumstances, the camera has to be on. Who had the entire meeting, and anybody over the age of 18 that's in the same room has to be introduced. Um, otherwise, before we go to the pre-COVID, where council members can attend from a remote location, but that remote location has to be posted 72 hours in advance, has to be open and accessible to the public, meaning ADA compliant, and the members of the public have to be allowed to participate from wherever the council members participating.
We get for leaving turns, I'll, for the public, I've used this many times, as I know my colleagues have as well, not just here, but throughout the county. Um, whenever we do travel, which is something that's very common for residents to do and need to call in for Zoom access. And, uh, you know, something as easy as traveling for work or city business, and we're able to call in remotely. And so I just want to make sure that everyone's aware that we enjoy that privilege very easily and readily. Um, I also looked at the options. There were three options to put a verification. Uh, my colleague had talked about the cost. Two of those options do not have a cost, correct?
Um, let me go ahead and open the staff report. Um, okay, so the staff report lays out three different options. And so one is, um, doing authentication through Zoom, um, which doesn't have a cost to an external agency, so just staff time. And then, um, same with the second one, which would require even more staff time. And then the third, um, is using an outside vendor and has a cost of 2,000 annually.
Right, so again, two options with no.
Right. So again, two options with no additional cost. And I think that cost is very minimal. It's two thousand dollars. Um, on the third option, which isn't even the preferred option recommended by staff. Uh, I also wanted to ask, um, doesn't, doesn't the county of Santa Clara County allow remote access, which has one point nine two million residents, whereas we have forty-five thousand? Dawn, do you know about the county?
I don't know. I have just, um, just waited in their meeting, so I can tell you. They do, but I, I wanted to ask the question as we're working in question format. Um, and then, as my colleague had mentioned, we can have bad behavior, whether it's here in the chambers or it is online. We simply are not here to babysit. We're here to do the business of the people. And, and so, um, I just want to acknowledge that that's a possibility, no matter what, where we're doing that, whether that's online or here. Would you agree? It is a possibility.
And that was just mentioned in previous comments that, um, uh, council member Spring mentioned, um, how, you know, people still can come here. And, and what we saw with Zoom, it was probably people from all over that were using technology to, to zoom in and just hit a lot of different meetings by doing that. So you would have less people, you know, that would be, um, motivated to come in and do what they did online from the comfort of their homes. Maybe we could have a room full of people. I'm just saying it's possible in either way. The other question is, is this used readily for other boards that people may serve on as far as people calling in? And I know that that does happen as well. I chair the VTA PAC Board. We take Zoom comments. We also take in-person comments. Um, I know that happens at ABA, a number of different boards. Um, and then finally, we've come to rely very heavily on technology more and more so. I mean, this has, has permeated all departments of the city. And so, you know, I would just ask the question, do we not also want to be leading in technology and access to our residents as well here? Which we are in the twenty, you know, we, we've just got to get with the program here. So that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Councilmember?
No question.
We, I'll tell you what, let's, uh, let's, I don't have any further questions. Let's go to, we'll come back. We'll go to, uh, public comment.
Yes, Armando Benavides?
Of course. Evening, council members. So this Monday, I attended the Santa Clara County Board of Education Supervisor's meeting. Uh, they allowed both, uh, Zoom meeting in person viewing and Zoom comments. I made a public comment and listened to comments from others through Zoom. It was great to know those people got to participate remotely and we heard their voices. I also attended the last Morgan Hill Unified School District meeting, which allows also both Zoom meeting and some comments. Was on the opposite end on that one. Well, in person, I would comment, but I was not able to attend in person. I should took advantage and made a Zoom comment. So my voice was heard, and I was very glad of that. And I also got to hear the people who made, uh, the comments in, in person. So we're talking about community engagement. That is an important goal. It's no better goal. It is a worth goal, worth while goal to allow full participation using all means available. We have the technology. We have the means to allow individuals, elderly persons, disabled persons, like with full loads, with their parental responsibilities who cannot make it here, and many more. There's many reasons why people cannot make it here on time. They're working. They're doing all kinds of things. Now, I do want to say, one bad apple, somebody called in, and what they did, they exercised their right to free speech. It was hateful speech, but it is their right. Their right to make it. We have a right to make it. And just because somebody decided to come in and make hateful speech, which is not, is not even the general. We never had that happen before, but it happened. Why should we scuttle the right for everybody? I ask you to give full force to community engagement. General citizens, which for whatever reason cannot attend in person, to exercise the right to make comments and express, express their points of views and positions to guide you in your decision-making. Long ago, we want to make comments just because somebody came in and exercised the right of fundamental speech, which is valuable in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have no more speakers.
Very good. We'll close. Public comment, bring it back for.
There's someone Zoom. Is that not true? Kim? We don't have anybody on Zoom. But Yvonne is just, you asking for a public comment on Zoom? We don't offer public comment right now on Zoom.
All right.
I thought you were going to make.
No, I know can laugh afterwards, but I didn't hear the laughter.
I was going, I have to be told that there wasn't another card. No. Okay.
Very good. We'll close. Public comment, and now come back for council, councilmember Lebers? Yeah, that was not bad.
It's.
Long day.
I did, I want to ask her city manager, since she presented this. Um, and it kind of goes with what my colleague, um, Yvonne has to say. So as council members, we still would be allowed to Zoom in. This decision we're making tonight has to do with the public. Is that correct?
That's correct. Zooming in subject to what the attorney Larkin said.
I just want to be clear that I want to understand. We're not excluded, in fact, from this decision.
No, no, no. My point is that we can, the public can.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Spring?
Yeah, the, in preparation of, of tonight, I was looking around what, what's happening, and I don't know if that's an option, but it looks like, like some cities try to work around this by, by only allowing comments remotely if they are related to a specific agenda item. And, 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 and the benefit of doing that, this, it, it allows the presiding officer, the, the mayor in our case, to, to actually legally interrupt the speaker if, if, if they do not speak on the particular agenda item. Whereas, uh, if, if it happens during the, the open public comment period, uh, you have to let them talk, right? There, there is a distinction there. It seems, I'm not, I can't give, uh, legal advice. Have you heard that as well?
I've heard that there are cities exploring that. I don't know if any people actually are doing it at this point.
So Tacoma and Seattle are doing that, it seems. I mean, Washington State.
Yeah, cities in California who have operated under the Brown Act. I think there are some cities considering it. I don't know if any of them.
And, 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 and to me, that, that seems to be, uh, uh, an option that I think we could work with.
I will mention, just in talking with, uh, people from other agencies, we did get public comment, um, outside of just the general public comment for items not on the agenda. And what would end up happening is they would take the item and start their public comment consistent with the item. So say if it was a tree contract, and then they would talk about tree contracts, and then basically start into their hate speech after that. So they would transition in. So they'd start relevant and then transition out.
No, I, I understand that, and, and any of that is possible, right? But it can happen here in the room too. It is, so I, I, but, but it would give the presiding officer the tool to say, uh, to shut, shut that person off, whereas you cannot do that during the public comment, uh, period, right? Those three minutes. There's a difference of how much power the presiding officer has then. And then to me, that's an important distinction. Do you, I, I, you, you know, I, I'm torn on this one because I don't want to listen to, to, to hate speech, uh, uh, get enough, uh, of that in my life. But, but, um, uh, and when in doubt, I, I, I'll go for, you know, we should make it as easy as possible for residents that cannot be here at five or six o'clock to call in and then, and, and to, to enable them to call in if they want to. But I, but I think it's, for me, that's an interesting distinction, right? And, and that public comment only can be made on specific agenda items as they pertain to that agenda. And, and then you could cut it off if needed. So I, I'd like to explore it with, with, with adding some, I'd, I'd, easy identification as well as it has been proposed with a couple of options, right? Uh, I, I realize that's not going to solve the problem, and it adds a little bit of a, of a blockage to.
Yes, that's where the discussion, I'd like to add on to that. When we had those incidents before, actually, we had like two right in a row. The first one, I was like, what? I mean, you know, it wasn't until we were into the second one that I realized what was going on. And my concern is, yes, they'll start talking about trees or whatever we're talking about, and they'll start in it. And then we're, we're listening to it going, uh, you know, confused as to what, before they're cut off. And we have the ability to hang up the call or whatever that, whatever we do, if they're calling in and start ranting. Is there a ability?
From a technical standpoint, absolutely can be cut off. From a legal standpoint.
Uh, there's.
So if they, if they say, you know, they're going to talk about a certain agendized item, and they start the conversation, and then they go into the rant or whatever they want to say, we don't, at that point, cannot cut them off?
Physically, we can, but if they're talking about anything related to the subject, even if what they're talking about is hateful, we can't.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. And I'm just concerned, like I said, they might use that as a way to get in to talk to us and then just start going into the rants or whatever they want to call them, and we are listening to them. So that's a concern for me.
Councilmember Bojoli?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, Christina, uh, I, I, and, and Kim, I, I, I think there is a facility where you can in advance write in, um, a question. Am, am I correct about that?
Are you, um, stating that you could, members of the public can write public comment and send it into CC public comment, and then it becomes part of our agenda? We supplement it. Is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. So, um, it, it's really, uh, a mute point that, you know, if you're elderly or if you're busy, that you can't make the meeting because you really can't, because you can put in whatever question that you want to put in. So again, we're complying with the Brown Act. And I think, again, you know, if, if, if we vote to go forward with this relative to allowing it, and it happens again, shame on us. I'm sorry. Uh, I, again, I, I stated this. I watched those high school kids' faces when this happened, and it was horrible to see their faces. And so, and, and one public comment was, oh, well, these are kids, you know, they listen to curse words every day. But hate speech was horrible. Hate, any type of hate speech. I don't care what it is. We shouldn't, anything that we can do not to allow it, we, we, we should, we should do it. Uh, so that's my, uh, comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez-Beltan?
Thank you. I, I urge my colleagues that this is, this is about the people's business. We are doing the people's business. I don't think that we should have any additional, we should be able to come and go and, and, you know, travel and call in from vacation, call in because we're out of town, call in because we have business to do, call in because we're at a conference. But yet, our own residents can't enjoy that privilege. I think that that is, I've never enjoyed such privilege. And so to me, it is very uncomfortable to do. Um, I think that the kids who have attended and, and our youth would be horrified that their council would block their access via technology. A lot of the high school kids, college kids, they don't even, they don't even make calls. They text, they're online, they're streaming. That is their way and mode, and that is the way of the future and, and the, the new generation. And I think, you know, we need to adapt. We need to meet people where they are because we are doing their business. Um, I also think this happened six months ago, and we're barely getting back to this issue. Um, it's, it's about access. You know, I know for me, talking about sending in public comment and emailing, saying that to a busy mom with three little kids, saying that to somebody who's maybe elderly, saying that to somebody who works two jobs, saying that to somebody who commutes over two hours. We could easily submit all of our council comments through email, and we would have no need to be here, but it is simply more effective. It is more convenient. It is more poignant to have conversations in person and to do business. When you do business with people, you typically, if it's an important piece of business, you meet. And so I think it is important to provide that access to people. Um, and so I, you know, I would hope that we could. If the county is able to manage this with two million residents, they are much further exposed than the city of Morgan Hill with forty-five residents, worry about the anomaly. And I can tell you that, I mean, I'm, I'm at the county meetings every meeting they have. There's, they're not having any issues. I'll tell you, they're not having this issue. So for, for us to deny all of these people this convenience and more, it's really, um, I, I don't know what to say. Uh, so, you know, again, I would say there's no cost to this. The only cost would be to our residents if we were to rock them out from access to their own, um, to their own business. So I will move that we do, you know, it sounds like there's more to be had once we decide this, and, and that's fine. But I would certainly like to move to, um, resume access, um, Zoom access. Maybe it's some other, I don't know, maybe it's not Zoom with the verification, so I don't want to limit it to Zoom. But I would like to certainly move to adopt, um, and move back, return to the future, if we can, go back to the future.
Remote comments, as much as, yeah, you were saying.
For remote access. Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
You have a motion by, uh, Councilmember Martinez-Beltan?
Thank you.
I, I would second it, but I'd like to make a friendly amendment that we limit it to, uh, specific agenda items only.
What, what exactly does that mean?
I explained it earlier. What, what that means is that gives the presiding officer of the meeting the authority to, to legally cut down, cut off someone when, when that person is no longer, uh, speaking to the particular topic. Whereas during the, the three minutes, you know, public, uh, what is it called? Public comment period, right? At the beginning of our evening agenda, uh, you can say anything you want, right? Has nothing to do with anything on the agenda. But that, that part will not be allowed remotely. But if you want to speak on agenda in number five, you're entitled to it.
So you're saying the public comment at the beginning of the meeting, which is general in nature, on anything that is not on the agenda, that does not provide access remotely?
Yes, because that's a First Amendment topic, and, and the, the presiding officer cannot in, interrupt that speaker during the, the time allocated because of, uh, because of legal reasons, right? Whereas if, if someone does not speak on the particular agenda topic, presiding officer can, can stop that person from talking.
Okay. So all of the other items that would be able to have remote access on, it would not be up to the presiding officer to determine whether or not they are able to speak on it.
Dawn, can you weigh on this? Is that, is that legal to do? Uh, exclude one, but allow others?
I know that there are other cities looking into that, cities out of state that do it.
Yeah.
There are, um, cities also that put remote public comment on items not on the agenda at the end of the meeting. So they take, they split it so that, um, in-person public comment goes first at the end of the agenda is when they take remote public comment on Zoom, as primarily so that their city employees and members of the public don't want to hear hate speech, have an opportunity to leave, because, um, it is a hostile work environment to subject our teammates to that kind of, uh, conduct.
So it sounds like this isn't something that we have yet. So I guess I would, you know, I would say I would like to move forward with access to Zoom comments, and then we could always come back and talk about what, you know, may happen, um, or might happen with the ability to, um, with a general public comment. But I want to, I want to resume for everyone else.
Stay with your original motion? Is that what you're saying?
Well, it sounds like there is no.
Well, yeah, good point.
That exists. So that's what I'm saying. I, I think we should move forward.
Uh, with all due respect, that's not correct. It does exist, that option. Some cities, I, I mentioned Seattle and Tacoma using it. That's where I got the idea from.
I mean, in the state.
It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter.
Well, we would need to, I, 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 I'm not sure. I think, I mean, that's why I say other cities in California are looking at it. And we could certainly look at it as well. I just don't know that that's off the top of my head, it does permit it under the Brown Act. The truth does different types of public comment differently. I, I suspect it would be okay, but I just don't want to say definitively.
Okay, can I rephrase it? If the city attorney comes back quickly to determine that that would be okay, that that we were limited to the remote public comment to items on the agenda only.
But I think at this point, I would, I would like to go with this most motion to provide access to Zoom comments. Maybe you want to make a substitute motion, but I, I think especially with residents. You know, are we going to also subject them to you cannot make any public comment? You live in the city of Morgan Hill. We know you live in the city of Morgan Hill, but you can't make a comment on a general public comment. You can only comment on the items. And I, I just am not comfortable with that. I'm not comfortable with that. So, I mean, I would be happy to come back and discuss that, but I think that right now I'm most interested, six months later, in us giving access to.
Let's move to second time. Can you say you're, you want to stick with your original motion?
Yeah, that's what I, I.
Okay, so we have, we have a, we have a motion. Do we have a second? There ring, no second, that dies.
Okay.
No further comments needed. That this item is dead and it goes no further.
Okay, well, I thought you were going to make the substitute motion, which is why I said I.
We said there was, no, no, no. We asked for a second. He's, no one, no one responded to a second.
No, I asked if he was going to do, suggest he did a substitute motion.
Yes, because I didn't know what the other ones were thinking, right? I was waiting. The, uh, but the point is if you and I don't agree, there's not going to be any motions, right? And, and you don't want, you don't.
Well, if.
Hold on, councilmember? Hold on, councilmember?
If you're.
Councilmember, no, 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 no.
Then I could support it.
You have made a motion. There was no second. Get back.
I understand that, but I asked if he would make.
It's not about, it's not about.
I realize that you don't want to move forward with this item, Mayor.
Councilmember.
Please allow the process.
Point of order, Mayor.
Hold on, just one second. I'm trying to make, it's a process now. That motion died. If the councilman would like to make a motion, he can do that.
Now, and so I'm, I'm making a motion to, to allow a remote access uh again, but limited to, to items on the agenda only.
Have a motion? Is there a second? Okay. Uh, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, all opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. So that passes three to two. Okay, very good. We will uh then go on to item number nineteen. Provide direction regarding options for public art funding.
Good evening, Council. Edith Ramirez, Assistant City Manager for Development Services. Good evening, teammates and members of the public. Thank you for saving the best for last. Thank you, Kim. How do we transition from the last conversation to this one?
I don't know.
Quickly.
Jump right in.
Quickly. All right, I, I know that it's late. Um, we're here today to have a conversation about public art funding. And what we have before you is a bit of an analysis as well as some recommendations from staff on how to move forward. Um, in Morgan Hill, we already have guidance by the general plan and by the downtown specific plan to move forward and support art, to enhance the visibility of art and elevate creative culture. We also have a volunteer commission, the Library Culture and Arts Commission, that supports the city in growing projects, art installations and preserving public art collection, as well as doing programming for cultural events. We have a public art inventory of forty independent art pieces. The, the pieces could be sculptures, murals, but we also have a number, a much bigger number of place-making features throughout the community. We also have uh programs that support culture like art à la carte, open studios and rotating art displays. Now, when it comes down to funding, the city of Morgan Hill does not have a dedicated source of funds for public art. As I mentioned, the, the commission is a volunteer commission as well as the staff dedicated to support this is limited. Um, so a lot of the work and the achievements that we've been able to do is through gifts, donations, grants and fundraising. Um, we, we do have a little bit of funding um that remain from a previous uh project. Uh, it's only about forty eight thousand dollars that can support some programming going forward. However, in the city, in addition to the, the programming from the commission, we have also and always continue to look at ways to integrate art within the physical structure of our public projects. An example is the parking garage where you have the staircase and we were able to, instead of just having a concrete enclosed staircase, we were able to create this beautiful glass staircase that looks like Poppy Jasper. Or uh in the magical bridge where you have a number of art features integrated within the, the playground structures. So when looking at public art fees, uh, there's some attachments in the report. Um, but many communities that want to move forward in, in being more intentional with public art, they attach what is called a percentage fee to public and or private development. Um, projects, when communities do this, it's usually done in a way where the, the city evaluates the actual construction cost of the project and then attaches a specific percentage fee. And this percentage fee could range from half a percent to two percent. And, and those fees could range depending on whether it's a public project, a private project, a housing project or a, a, a project that is big or small. So there's a, a wide range of approaches that could be uh looked at for those fees. Um, with that, I'll transition to, we recognize that there's so many benefits to public art, including supporting the community's identity, uh promoting inclusiveness, creating place-making, supporting tourism and economic development. However, recognizing that moving forward with, with policies that apply an actual fee to development can also present some challenges. Right now, with the economic conditions, the high interest rates, the cost of construction, um another, yet another fee could make some of these projects even more challenging to get through the development process. We have seen a number of projects come to a dead halt because of lack of funding right now. And if we as a city choose to move forward with applying such a fee to public projects, when our projects are already razor thin and we already have to value engineer the projects, if we as a community choose to, to apply a percentage fee to public projects, it is possible that the general fund would have to backfill that commitment. With that, um, as I, I, I move to conclude the presentation, I do think that I want to leave you with some hope. We, right now, from a staff's perspective, we're not ready to recommend moving forward with a fee on public art. But we recognize the importance of doing other stuff to continue to promote uh arts and culture in the community. We have a gift of this amazing uh fine art gallery that if you have seen the construction, it's absolutely beautiful. It is a beacon for where we want to go with public art. But it stands alone and we recognize and we have been having a number of conversations with uh the developer about how can we as a city do other activities that support an ecosystem that can make this art gallery sustainable in the long run. So that could look like creating more maker spaces that not only brings space for artists to do their work, but also to support additional retail within the community. Um, so there's a number of, of possibilities that we can do. We can support uh grant funding, continue, we already do that. Uh, they're not always successful. Often uh art grants um look for communities that showcase a lot of need, which is difficult for us as a community to go seek those, those grants. Um, as well as um government agencies are not always as successful at getting those grants. But we can continue to, to pursue that. I always look at what can we do in, within the rules and regulations of the city? And we just get out of the way. And we have to a great extent. Uh, you, you see a number of murals and activations that take place in our community. And that is a way where the city is relaxing the, the regulations. But we can even do more than that. We can look at our design guidelines or, or the, the development design guidelines and actually have an objective standard that says we want to have some form of, of art within the project, right? Now, we're not attaching it to a fee of the construction of that project, but we are saying we want you to do something and integrate some public art. So we've been in conversations with the team as to how that could be. Um, and then uh we can also look at partnerships with the downtown property-based improvement district, the tourism district, uh, the, the developers that are actively promoting around town to see how we can collaborate in creating more spaces. Maybe bring in the Urban Land Institute and do a technical study that can create even more ideas for us and how we can pursue other um opportunities such as affordable housing with Makerspace. So with that, I will conclude with a policy question for you, which is should the city consider a public art requirement for public and or private development? And should uh staff continue to explore opportunities to increase uh art culture in Morgan Hill? And that concludes my presentation.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Councilmember Borjoli.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Edith, when you say private development, what, what do you mean by private development?
Right, so uh, uh, and it, any commercial development, say the manufacturing, say residential, anything that is not being constructed as a public project by the city.
Okay, and so could you give me an example of a fee zero point five percent on a project? What would that fee be that would impact that project so much that they may not go forward with it?
Well, in, in many cases, communities um actually do create um ceilings of um as well, within the matrix of, of, well, what would a one percent or a half a percent look like? Uh, you identify the projects that you think are appropriate to attach, attach this fee. And you can also explore a maximum of a one percent and not to exceed a certain number. In your um attachment of exhibits, there were some studies that I shared with you of what uh some of the other neighboring communities do um as, as it relates to fees. Uh, for example, the city of Cupertino uh has a one percent on the first one hundred million of construction valuation. Um, and again, it's hard to actually uh quantify what a, a half a percent would look like because it all depends on the cost and the valuation of the project. A project, say today, of a hotel that is, say, somewhere in the range of sixty million dollars and is struggling, right, to move forward, then any half a percent or one percent would be uh perhaps challenging as they are uh trying to bring the project as is to fruition.
Just to clarify, we can't charge a straight fee for public art without doing an extra study. What we would, what we would instead do is say that to a, to a developer, there's a condition of your building permit, you're required to provide public art in the amount of whatever percentage. Um, if the developer wanted to opt out of doing that, then they could pay an ILU fee instead of providing that art. So to be clear, it's that what, what we're imposing is a requirement to provide public art.
And, and if in the, in the case of the ILU fee, if they don't integrate the public art, so the art has to be public so that the community has to be able to see it, access it. So if it's inside, then the lobby has to be available to the public. If they choose not to implement that public art uh within the project, then they could give the money, they can dedicate the fund to the public art fund that the city could administer. Or there could be a hybrid, right, where they implement a certain amount of public art and the delta could go to the public art fund.
So again, Edith, just help me out. What, it, it, it just use any number, a, a, a sixty million dollar. And what's a point five percent fee related to? What's?
It's gotta be about thirty thousand dollars, I think. Sixty million, one percent.
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the.
Yeah.
I was trying to.
I think it's about a thirty thousand dollar.
About thirty thousand. So I, I think that's uh on the expensive side, um, to be honest with you. But, okay, so let's just say a one percent would be six thousand.
Right, uh, sixty thousand.
Sixty thousand.
On a sixty million dollar project.
Uh, I, I'm sorry, um, three, point one.
Point one would be sixty thousand on a sixty million dollar project.
No.
No.
Six thousand.
Six thousand.
Okay. I, I don't have a calculator here, so.
Okay, so.
I'm sorry.
Just a moment. We had a sixty million, sixty million dollar project. If we were to impose a one percent, you're looking at six hundred thousand. So a half a percent, three hundred thousand.
Or you have a not to exceed number.
Or, or, or a point one percent.
Yeah, I mean, you could, I can give you that number too if you wanted. So a point it's like point oh oh one is what you mean, basically, so less than half a percent.
One, yeah.
Yeah, so that would be sixty thousand.
That would be sixty thousand?
Yeah.
Wow. Okay, so now I see why it might impact a, a development. So, so can't we, can't we figure out some type of a fee to make it more um, uh, uh, appealing, saying this is, this is what we work on? You know, and going forward and, and not really having it to be a, a sixty thousand dollar or a thirty thousand dollar item, you know. But may, maybe, you know, maybe if, if it's a, you know, a ten or fifteen thousand dollar fee, I, I'm sure you know, a developer would be okay with that. And that might be just something that, you know, if we have a couple of projects like that and then we, we have a, a total of a hundred thousand dollars in the kitty, you know, that's something at least this volunteer group could work with. So, you know, I, what I'm trying to do is, you know, figure out a way on how we can make this work as opposed to just not, not bringing a, a fee going forward because it might impact the development. Let's, let's get a reasonable figure and, and attach it that way. So that, that, that's my, that, or this INLU may, may work also. Um, if, if it's a reasonable amount. What we don't want is to have it hamper the project going forward. So we, we got to figure this out. But I think this is really important. I really like this idea. Um, and I think we should do everything that we can to figure out a way on how to bring money in to beautify Morgan Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Libers.
Hello, thank you for the good report. Um, one of the suggestions of things we could do is to partner with um ULI. Okay, is there a fee to partner with them? Do they charge for that?
Yes.
What is this sample again?
Thank you. The Urban Land Institute is uh an organization that uh has a number of experts that are members of the organization and they often work with communities where they bring in these volunteer experts to help brainstorm ideas and solutions. And it, it is an organization that we've worked with in the past and there is a fee. Um, the, the, a technical study could be uh forty thousand dollars. And um, but you know, it's, it's something that we, the city can advance in partnership with perhaps um. And um but, you know, it's something that we, the city, can advance in partnership with perhaps um. I'm gonna put it out there, visit Morgan Hill, the P bid, uh perhaps even some of the developers, and and if everybody contributed. Maybe we can get and get some even fresher ideas and things that we haven't thought about.
Okay, all right, thank you, and then I have um one more question. Instead of, and it's kind of the same thing, um, my colleague said, is it possible to? Give a flat fee, like for any project that's over a certain amount, you know, large projects, it's ten thousand dollars and not do a percentage.
I think, I mean, the short answer is, it's sort of. Um, we can't just impose a fee for art, we have to let the people, the developers actually. Put the art in, um, it's it's the developer's option to say, not interested in putting public art into my project, so I'm going to give you money. So we could come up with, I think it would be possible to come up with a framework where. Um, where we would have an INLU fee that's less than, like it has to, it does a way to do it. But I think it would be um more complicated than just saying one percent of your project has to go towards public art.
It could be a set fee, though, for projects that are over, you know, a million or whatever.
We could say, what we could say is that for a project over um X square footage, it has to be. It has to include a public art component that's valued at X dollars, and if they say, I don't want to put that. I don't want art in my building, so I'm not gonna do it, then they would pay that value.
Okay, do we have to give them the option of putting the art in their building, or can we just give them a fee that goes into our our art fund?
No, we have to give, it it's it, we can't just impose a fee without um without doing a whole nexus study and showing the impact. What we can do, you know, what the courts have said is allowable is to exercise. The city's police power to require art as a component of any new development.
And that would be, I'd like, uh, uh, uh. Public art, so the public would have access to that, not just the residents in that development, okay?
All all the research that we, when looking at cities that have created a fee. Is a percentage fee that is attached to the valuation of the project. Um, and the smallest amount that we have seen is half of a percent.
With that, could be a not to exceed number. You mentioned that earlier.
We, yeah, I we can, we can look at that.
Option to explore, I don't, you know, I'm sorry, I'm thinking on your time, I don't know if you're done. Okay, now I'm gonna go ahead and jump in, so we, um, so it's a, you could do a percentage. Again, it's the option to the builder first, if they refuse, then there is a. There's some fee, whether it's a percentage and not to exceed number or whatever it is. And that's, of course, what we would ask you to go back and figure out, is that correct?
Correct, and we haven't done any public outreach with um our development community. I think that, again, should should there be direction, um, things for us to come back to is what is the framework? Um, would this be applicable to commercial and residential projects? Would it be applicable to projects of a certain size? Um.
And that is what.
And that would be part of the work ahead.
Okay, that'd be part of the work that you guys would come back with and say, here's here's what we've discovered, recommend, okay, okay. But the um. And again, what I've done, the research I've done is most part is one to one and a half percent is what I'm seeing, but cities in the Bay Area for the most part. Um, easy to say, let's not do this because it's not a good time, but when is a good time? We can say, that is a question, when is, when is the right time? You know, you go back to the old saying, you know, when when's the best time to plant a tree? Twenty-five years ago, the next best time, today.
And that's the answer.
That's the answer I'm looking for, I I I will say. I I'm just saying, I know that there's concern about, ooh, time might not be right, and again, one of the options could be, we don't apply it to public projects, we apply it to private projects, that could be one of the options as well, is that correct?
It is correct, I I think the council can decide what is the direction, what is appropriate, what is digestible at this point. Uh, like I said, we haven't reached out to the development community to get their feedback as well. Um, we simply recognize today, even for us. It's it's incredibly challenging to bring the projects forward, we have a lot of projects in the pipeline. But a lot of the projects come have come to a dead halt. If they didn't have financing, they're on hold, they're trying to secure financing. The what we are hearing across the board for commercial and residential projects. The cost of construction has really skyrocketed for the projects, and our development community is struggling to bring those those projects home.
Uh, to, also, or Borjoli's point is if if what we don't want to do is create an additional burden on them, but a. A smaller fee is not necessarily a burden, uh, it is if we're talking sixty thousand, six hundred thousand, yeah, that's 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 unreasonable. But a a fee, if we called it a not to exceed number, could be a reasonable number.
Yes, and 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 again, I I think that in addition to the conversation of the fee, should the council want to move forward with that intention? The city can can have very um forward actions where we can be intentional by the rules and regulations that we have. That is not that that could be parallel or um or could be our first steps forward. Again, looking at, can we require some form of art right now, regardless of the amount? Can we as a city be more um um supportive of murals? And can we change our municipal code to suggest that that it is something that we're encouraging? Could we as a city look at perhaps contracts where we, instead of like the the stick carrot and stick approach? Where we offer design support services for developments, so we, when they come in through the design review. We look at it with a lens of where they can actually add public art through somebody else, not me. But through somebody that would know, hey, you have this tremendous wall, you have this hallway, you have this frontage. And and there's a number of ways that we can also approach it.
If they choose not to, then here's the alternative, an INLU fee. Right, that's an option.
Yes, the 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 INLU fee is 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 within the construct. Again, I I see it as in there's a menu of things that the city can do to move the needle. Within the construct of the the fee for public art, that it's in itself is is a separate framework. And within that, it's you integrate the art, it has to have some sort of an an attachment to the construction valuation. And either you build it, integrate it, or you contribute a an INLU fee to the city's public art fund.
Right, okay. Okay, and yet, council member Martina Speltran.
Thank you, um, so we, this is basically what we did with RDCS, we had, you pay in. And that's how we were funding our art, but RDCS is now gone, and we don't have that, we've had an attack on our fees that has gone on. Um, so could you go back to that slide where you had these different options, please, if you would? Thank you. Thank you, um, you talked about integrating public art, so. There's a little thing, uh, oh, thank you. I'm really interested in, we talked about um collaborating, things like SV Creates and the Eads Gallery that we have coming on. I'm not really clear with the P bid, is that what you were talking about earlier? With the tourism and, you know, that maybe there's some opportunity there? Or is it Morgan Hill, is that what, is that what you were referring to with that?
Correct.
Okay, okay, so I really like those ideas, I think ULI would be a great, I mean, Urban Land Institute is all over the world, if anybody knows how to do it, they do. Um, and I I really like the idea of affordable housing, bringing artists. Business sneakers who are trying to do maybe something really creative with that, so I guess, you know, when I'm looking at this. We, when you talk about a percentage, I mean, obviously, a percent, half a percent, that's that's not even feasible, we couldn't even do something like that. Um, if we're talking six hundred thousand and three hundred thousand. I guess what I'm looking at is what else could that percentage fee be used for? If you were to put a percentage fee on a development, it could be used for public art, what else could it be used for? Can it be used for infrastructure, can it be used for maintenance of parks, can it be used for roads?
No. Okay, it would be used for public art.
So that percentage fee, we would have to use it for public art?
I mean, Luffy, we we would, this, the council doesn't have the ability to impose a fee for public art. What the council has the ability to do is to say that a project needs to incorporate public art. Into the project and needs to spend a percentage of the project on that public art. Then if the developer doesn't want to do that, they would have the option to pay instead of providing that public art.
So my question is, that fund, because we would create a fund, as we do for everything, that fund would then, we would only be able to access that? For public art, what would be the limitations of that?
We would have to use it for public art.
That be used? How narrow is that?
It's very narrow, it has to be used for public art.
There's a Zoom call.
Okay, so we wouldn't be able to use it in existing parks?
We could use it to create art in existing parks, so if we wanted to um commission a sculpture or a mural.
So I I guess my point was, you know, we're looking at this budget, we've just asked for. Top priorities for summaries and positions that might not make the chopping block, we've asked for, I've asked for capital projects that we might not be able to do. And so. You know, if if we create a fund, we are looking at our development fees to try and see, we've got a million dollars that we're short in our development fund. And so we're gonna have to come up with some development fees.
That's my question, Tim, council member, yeah, questions? I get those into questions if you.
Did you hear the question?
I I did hear, I just wanted to make sure we're moving in that direction.
I'll just ask the question.
Yeah, I just want to make sure you you get to the question, so please, Edith, if you would.
Thank you, uh, the confirming the question is you were referring to our development, um, the development fee. But we are going to have to create some development fees, we have a million dollar shortage in our development fund.
So th- those are cost recovery fees, we're not allowed to charge. Beyond the cost of our services, that's called a tax, and it needs to go to the voters. So we, what what we're talking about is what we're able to do, um, either as cost recovery or under the council's police powers. So um, if if you're just talking about creating new fees to pay for services that aren't cost recovery, that has to go to the voters.
I mean, what I'm saying is developers, I'm I specifically asking about developers because this fee is going to go to the developers. And so what I want to know is, are we going to be coming out to developers with this fee study that we've been conducting and asking for more fees from developers?
Well, which is the reason why our recommendation is what it is. We are looking to increase our development fees as part of our fee study, we are rounding the corner with that work. And again, that coupled with the economic conditions today, it's um the question for us, is this the right timing? For adding yet another fee on developments when the uh cost of construction is so high. Um, so I I think I'm I'm tracking with where you're going and is, um, I think that that is exactly the challenge that we have. Uh, at this point, supporting an actual fee to be added when we're already tacking additional, uh, we're we're expecting to be. Looking at our fees and coming back to the development community with that conversation. Okay, so, so then, when you say, what do you mean when you say the general fund would have to backfill this? If our, say, fire station, as an example, sorry, chief, um, or whatever other project we have. Whatever the cost we estimated, at some point, projects get to the place where it's like, oh, it's gonna cost us a lot more to build it. We're gonna have to value engineer it, but we still need to build the walls and build the ceiling and and put in the doors and put in all this other stuff. But there's, if there's no money within that project fund to support whatever that attachment, whatever that percentage fee for art. If there's, if there's no place for that, and then we're, as we as a city, as if we're the developer. How are we gonna pay for that public art contribution? The general fund is gonna have to backfill that.
Oh. Okay, because we've already, because we've put that on ourselves.
If if that is, i- if that is part of a construct of of how the fee gets applied, again, the what, when and where. It's yet to be figured out, is it, is it something that we want to move forward with? Private projects only, but not ci- not city public works? Is it something that we want to do for commercial projects only or for residential projects only? Is it something we want to do for as projects of a certain size and let the smaller projects go through with that added burden?
Well, I I mean, I I love having public art, and, you know, there was a way we did this before, but of course, that doesn't work anymore, so. Um. I I would, I would love to hear, what do you think of this list that you've put out, you know? Um, I mean, we're not talking about a percent or a half a percent anymore, we're talking about a miniscule amount. Because we've just done the bath on the dais, so. What, you know, what is your, your best recommendation of the of these or what's in your wheelhouse or what?
This in front of you, um, if it made it, if if it made it here, um, I I think that uh we can, we can explore how we pursue that and. Um, so for example, the ULI as 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 an example, we don't, we don't have it in the budget right now, it was not in what we just released for the public. But say that we go out to our partners in the community and everybody contributes and we find a way to bring it forward, then. Then that is a possibility for us to to execute in perhaps in the fall. So so I think that what is here in front of you, it's a menu of things that that it's within our wheelhouse. And and that we can pursue.
Can I ask you one more question?
Yeah, please, well, let's see, the council member spring first.
Hi, uh, just briefly, it's ten twenty-four, so I just want to do a little check in.
Yep, we're gonna keep going until this is done.
Yeah, and we do have members of the public, I think they're have public comic cards.
Council member spring.
Uh, tha- thank you, mayor, the uh you mentioned earlier that that this would would. Help tourism and economic development, I kind of struggle to see that unless we're talking about a MoMA or a Luth or something. I uh to to come and see a bicycle that is colored or something, standing on a street corner, uh, uh, I mean, that's also public art. That my would, what am I missing in that statement?
Um. I think that communities that that showcase a a healthy amount of placemaking. And interesting public art are communities that people want to visit. They want to linger, they want to go, they want to spend money there, and um. We, in our documents, both the general plan, the specific plan, the documents for for visit Morgan Hill. Speak to to that, um, I think it's it's grounded on on where um people and communities want to go and spend money. I think the challenge is, here we have a beautiful gallery, and people may want to come and visit the gallery, and then the question is. Then what else? Where do I go? I spend, I I spend an hour at the gallery, where do I go? Okay, I'm I'm gonna go for another hour and have lunch, but if we can continue to find and promote. An ecosystem that has makers, that has artists that are doing activities, but has retail. That supports the the business community and economic development, I think that then when we can move forward. With a with a bigger, wider, broader offering for visitors and for residents. Um, and and again, there's, there's a lot that can be done in-house within our our own public landscape. I've gone to many communities, um, it was just in Palm Springs as an example, and a vacant lot in the heart of uh of their downtown. It could have been Palm Desert, all those towns come very close very quickly, but they had a a a vacant lot, and they had an outdoor gallery. All they had was this concrete up hats and some uplighting and descriptions of the art. Right, so there is a number, there's a community up in Napa in Yountville. Right? So there is a number, there's a community up in Napa in Yountville where throughout the sidewalk, they have displays, they have dedicated sections where artists can come in and display their public art. So I think that there's other things that could be done with perhaps some funding and some creativity. And, and I'm excited about this conversation, whether the council chooses to move forward with the fee or not. I think that there is much that we can do to be more intentional in creating that sense of placemaking.
Yeah, I, I, I understand. Yeah, I might disagree with, with the impact it might have on Morgan Hill. We're not, not in the valley, even though we would like to be, but we're just not. But I also, I don't know if we live in the same city, but the, I mean, the number one concern and, and all we see is there's a lot of projects happening in this city. So, so I, I don't think a minor fee is, is not going to stop that piece, right? The, I, I, I don't understand that concern either, that we don't see a lot of, of projects happening in our town when look around, it's everywhere, right? What, what am I missing? What, what projects are not happening because of this? I see all the.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying. I appreciate that.
I see all the commercial building. I see the housing going up and, and as we speak, right? So, so why are you saying it, projects are not happening?
Well, we, we have a number of projects. There is the hotel on Cochrane as an example. We've been trying to, to bring that project, that hotel. This is at Evergreen, at the Evergreen Shopping Center. That's one example. We have a number of housing projects, the Magnolias. We have a long list of projects that are entitled. And they're, they're not quite moving forward. And even those that are moving forward, they're in conversations with us on, on the gap and, and the challenges that they have.
Right, but some of those already were in the pipeline when the interest rates were low and they still didn't do it back then, right? So I, I, I just don't think that, that a minor fee has, has an impact on any of those projects, one way or another. There's probably other reasons why they're not happening. That, that's one. Do you disagree with me?
Thank, thank you, council member.
Am I wrong?
I, I, I would never say that.
Brocholus, I, I can take it. All right. I think I got my answer on that one. I, I, I'm getting tired. I apologize. It's late for me. But, you know, it cannot, given our budget situation at the city, it cannot be a priority for the city to use city funding or city staff in any way or, or form. That, that's confusing. I'm trying to, to ask something. So it cannot be in any way, form, or shape our job as a city, right, to, to, to spend any resources on that. So I think the answer is either a fee or, or a private partnership, right? And, and plus then some of, of what you list. Yeah, I don't think we need to rule out anything, right? I, I'm not afraid of the fees. I'm not afraid of drawing some of, of this. What I'm afraid of is that, that we're spending funding for the city that we don't have. Yes, I rather have our roads fixed than have another police officer on the street versus another spider hanging somewhere, right? And I like that spider, but, but it's not a priority, right? When, when I have to choose among different things. So why are we not doing this anyways? Why? It isn't a channel plan, as you, as you say it is. That's a question.
Yes, thank you. Well, so pursuing grants is something that we've done. And I think that we, we do appreciate the conversation, whether we completely agree or disagree or how you want to approach this. This has revived and, and brought forward the opportunity of, of for us as a staff to look at what are the things that, that we can do and to engage going forward our partners on advancing this stuff. So thank you. I think that this conversation regardless is going to be healthy for, for the community as a whole.
Okay, I'll stop with questions. I don't want to punish you more.
Thank you, council member. Any public comments? We'll open the public comment period.
Yes, David Dindak.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council staff. I'm David Dindak. I'm president of the Downtown Association. And I have not had the opportunity to speak with the, the board yet about this, the public art project. But I wanted to come here tonight to draw some comments that we, I know that they would support it. We don't have a lot of funds, so I don't think that we would be able to donate a lot of money. But I do strongly believe that the board would come together and work with the city and work with the other organizations to, to make this happen. I know that would happen. And if it's correct, as far as the, the expense of, of housing and, 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 and projects, you know, something that was not on the, on, on the alternative was challenges, as Councilman Spring brought up, is that some of these developers have, in my other world, I, I speak with developers a lot. And there's issues with the, the, the planning process and getting approved. And getting approval for some plans could take several months. And I could see where, where developers would gladly put up in five or one point percent of their project if they could get their, their approval done instead of the six, eight months and then maybe six weeks to two months. And they would save a lot of money that way. So just one thought that I had. If we were able to do that for those planning, planning people or the, the, the project people, that would give us a twofer. Our other twofer would be, we would be like the, 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 well, what's my thought? Would be the developer's best friend. And we could bring, we could bring those people from up north that are building. We could fill these shelves over here on, on Butterfield and on Cochrane with our advanced manufacturing and our R and D and, and our health and, and science that we're, we're looking to bring in. So I, I would ask, if it was me, I'd be asking the staff to develop further the alternatives and even look into, you know, if we, if we could be able to, to shorten the time span, I think that we could do a lot better for our developers and that's it for me.
Very good. Thank you, David.
Nick Gash.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Leivers, City Council staff and community. Yeah, my name is Nick Gash. I'm speaking to you tonight in my role as CEO and President of the Chamber Economist. After my initial review of the staff report and the presentation tonight, I'd offer just a few thoughts for consideration. The first one is that along with the benefits outlined in the presentation, I would also suggest that the expansion of public art in Morgan Hill should also be recognized as an added benefit with respect to health and wellness of our community. I also want to reinforce that as a stance today, that art distribution must continue to incorporate a citywide focus to ensure community inclusiveness and balance. This, this conversation is well beyond just the downtown district. Now, the economic impact with respect to development projects, both pipeline and future, just requires further study. It's also inclusive of the recurring maintenance needs to protect and preserve the quality and sustainability of the art project. I'd also offer that the two discussion questions that are raised tonight, they were on the board. Should the city consider a public art policy requirement for public and or private development? Should the staff explore other opportunities to promote an art, an art culture? They're not mutually exclusive at all. So that brings to, about my recommendation that really this item really needs to be brought back with further analysis on the financial, the business development, the cultural and brand identity impact, as well as a proposed construct in developing a fee-based revenue stream for public art. So thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Nick.
Fernanda Santiago.
Good evening, Mayor Turner, City Council members, city lawyer, city manager, and community members. Wow. Okay, first, we need to figure out how to get that $48,000 to the Library Culture and Arts Commission because we have no idea how to access it. So anyways, I shall continue. In Abbott, Hile stated, if not now, when? The admonition to postpone no duty, the same admonition he gave with reference to study. Say not, when I have free time, I shall study, but you may perhaps never have any free time. We must take the same approach with reference to the arts in Morgan Hill. If not now, when? If not us, who? Currently, when we undertake the task of supporting the arts in Morgan Hill, budgeting is our number one limiting factor. We send muralists door to door to acquire sponsorship money for painting programs. To compensate for this, we turn to our local businesses, asking for money and for donations. We seek grant money. We turn to our community organizations, the Rotary, Kiwanis-NAW. We hold fundraisers and we often fall drastically short of the mark in attaining the funds needed. We don't say outright that arts are our priority, but that is the message given in delaying funding to our community to provide, to provide these public services. With additional financial pressures, the arts become the first of many services that are cut back or discontinued. As a commission, we've been tasked with creating an art master plan for the city of Morgan Hill, identifying locations suitable for murals, statues, and art installments to enrich the community and make our town a more inviting destination for residents and tourists alike. Without funding, this task is creating a catalog of dreams. We're making a list of what we would do if someday, somehow, we could find a way to pay for it, if someone made it a priority. For now, the development continues, but because we don't have infinite real estate, we don't have infinite time to delay until developers might want to pay money into supporting the culture of the towns they occupy. How many multimillion dollar construction projects are being sacked due to not having landscape hedging? Waiting for them to want to pay into our schools, our infrastructure, and our arts is a commitment for waiting for them to make enough money to feel generous to give, enough to give back to the community. If it's not a priority for us, it won't be a priority for them. If not now, when? If not us, who? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Marlene Marion.
Hello, Council and Mayor. I'm Marlene Marion, and I'm the person who created Waiting for the Train on Third and Depot Street. And that, I stood here before the council, a different council and mayor in 2005 with a proposal for a historical sculpture to be placed in the city of Morgan Hill. And my idea was that there were no references to the history of the city. And I took it upon myself to bring it forth and create an idea that would represent our past. And that was meant to educate the future. And in 2007, we placed the statue on the spot. It took me two years to create that piece. And I had exactly two days off and there were some days. So I put my heart and soul into that piece. And there's a reason why I did it beyond wanting to see that statue placed for educational reasons. I saw the potential of Morgan Hill to be a hub of culture eventually. We moved here in 1974, my husband and I, been in the same house ever since. And yet we could see the potential of future. And it's come to fruition to a degree because we now have wonderful wineries to visit. We have beautiful restaurants. We have a budding and beautiful gallery coming up. We have just a wonderful and beautiful city that's much different than it was before. So I would like to just give you the idea that these things are extremely important for a community. I've studied in Loveland, Colorado for years. They have a huge arts community and it's one of the largest in the United States. I also studied in Scottsdale, Arizona, doing anatomy studies there for eight years, ongoing workshops. And, you know, those cities support the art and it brings people in, it brings tourism in, it brings commerce in. And I just wrote here a few notes that, I mean, went to the heart of why we should have art in our city. And so I'll just read, this is a few.
We've got about, we've got five seconds to do it.
Oh, five seconds.
Your time is up. I'm sorry, your time is up.
All right. Thank you so much.
Siman Napati.
Siman, we'll have you come up and show your thoughts. Come on. Siman, we need you, have you come on up, please. We're going to have you speak on this.
Good evening, Mayor Turner, council members, city mayor, city attorney, and everyone present. As you know, I'm honored to serve as the Library Culture and Arts Commissioner for the city. And I so appreciate this opportunity to speak in support of some sort of tax, some way, just some way to create a dedicated community art fund. So as the city continues to grow and attract new development, it's so crucial to invest in the cultural and artistic fabric that makes Morgan Hill a vibrant and enriching place to live. Because you see, art is not just an aesthetic enhancement. It is a cornerstone of community identity, economic vitality, and social well-being. It will truly be appreciated not just by our very own residents, but visitors too. And honestly, I circled so many of the points and our city's vision and strategic priorities that was read just earlier this evening. I, I, you know, in what I wrote, everyone has said so already, so maybe I don't need to repeat but how much it is important in fostering a sense of place and belonging. It reflects a unique history, values, aspirations. Integrating art into urban landscape creates a space that inspires, engages, brings people together. There's just so much. Of course, economic benefits, like we want to do well. And if we are seen as a city that prioritizes art and culture, it is certainly going to create a positive impact. And Edith, like you, you know, I really respect you so much. And if you said times are hard, I know it must be really hard for you to have to say that. I was wondering, would like $10,000 for 60, $60 million thing be too much? Maybe just a little something that everyone could contribute to would be just wonderful. As Mandy or Amanda has already said, we are joyfully creating this master plan. And honestly, we don't want it to just be a pipe dream. I honestly implore all of you to please do look on this seriously. I think little by little, drop by drop, some sort of part to create art in this beautiful town, to support our wonderful and so very talented artists is just really important. They need to live too, just as we do. I have so much more to say, but I always do. I'm going to just stop now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Abigail Donovan.
And by the way, thank you all for hanging in here till the late hour.
Hello, everyone. I am just one of the many artists that's had the awesome opportunity to make art in Morgan Hill and see firsthand what kind of an impact that it makes. As a mural artist, I'm in touch with everybody all day long. And so I get all the real in-person feedback and I get to watch what happens. So I'd like to just share a few of my experiences as of late, working on this mural at Galvin Park. So in the last month while I've been painting, people of a wide range of ages and ethnicities have approached me and thanked me for creating that mural. I don't think I've ever been thanked more for doing something in my whole life. People have explained so many different stories to me that I just think were so interesting. One man explained that he lived. think were so interesting. One man explained that he lived across the street and that he told me that his father used to be an artist and it made him incredibly happy to be able to look out his kitchen window every morning to see the joyful colors of the mural and be reminded of his father. I just thought that was incredible. And uh, kids and adults keep telling me how much they love the art and most of them proceed to share with me some information about themselves as well. And then they also take a personal interest in me. The mural is helping people to feel seen, cared for and curious. It is increasing communication and facilitating relationships. That's all the proof that I need to know that art is essential in this community. Um, from my perspective, communication is at the center of every community that is thriving, just like cells in the body. When they communicate, there is a flow and the immune system is alive and well, preventing disease and promoting uh, regeneration, promoting regeneration. I like to end with a quote from a friend of mine who was explaining to me when I was feeling insecure about why art was important and why it was even essential, his perspective on this. And he said, um, plumbing is essential. Electrical work is essential, but we hide these things from view as best as we can. However, artwork, we hang on walls and in public spaces for everyone to see. It brings hope and some of the most amazing artwork throughout history was created through the times of war and depressions. Artwork is the sign of a thriving spirit. I think he's totally right. Um, and I just want to thank everyone in the city of Morgan Hill that was a part of the decision to help artists like me create work, um, and help us to be fairly compensated for it. It means a lot and it's definitely changed my life and definitely changed the lives of the kids at the Boys and Girls Community down at Galvin Park. Thank you.
Thank you.
And no more speakers.
No more speakers. Okay. We'll close public comment, bring it back for council discussion. Council member Martinez-Beltan.
Thank you. Thank you to all the speakers for coming. Um, and this is sadly a very difficult decision. Um, to me, I feel like it's, it's clear that we cannot do a percentage fee. It's really just not feasible um, for us to do. I think, I, I agree that art is essential and I think it does bring much hope and I love seeing it around and, and I think it's a great thing for, for our community. Um, but I'm, we're forced to look at the prioritization of our basic needs, water, housing, sewer, roads to employment, so we can pay mortgage or rent. Um, and so I think looking at that, looking at the budget that we'll go into detail next week, I would like for us to, you know, pass this back to staff. We are going to be looking at, we are looking at our fees, fees. We've been doing a fee study for months now to come out to try and help us address this million dollar deficit that we have in the development fund. And so perhaps they can look at, you know, again, I don't think it could be a percentage fee. Maybe there could be some type of a sliding tier that's attached to the application. I don't know. Maybe it is one of these other um, opportunities like SB Creates and what they've done in Delaware is amazing. But I think that we should certainly hand this back to, to staff to see what can we do? Um, and see, is there some type of sliding, you know, sliding tier? Is there something that we could put just a, a small uh, tack on the application or something so that, that everybody gets that? But I don't think, and the reason I don't want to do a percentage fee is again, because I know the deficit that we're looking at and I know that we're doing a fee study because we've been trying to make up those fees for years now. So um, that's, that's where I'm at. And that's, I would actually move that, well, we're not, we're not making an action. We're just giving input to staff, correct?
We will make an action, but I, I would like to have some other comments first.
What is the action we're doing?
The action, well, the action here would be to recommend to staff.
To provide direction.
That's what we'd be doing. It is recommending to them to go back. I like the direction you're going, but I would like to also consider, because we don't have to approve it, uh, when it comes back to us, but part of that, part of that study would be, here's what a percentage fee would be, no more than five percent, kind of not to exceed number as part of that conversation that we would have. So that's, I, I would like to see all of those options. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you all for sticking around so late with us. The, the being married to an artist, art, uh, I, I, I live for it every day at home. So, uh, and I love artists of all kinds. And, and if I was a little bit sarcastic earlier, apologize. I, I didn't mean it that way. Uh, I, I just, you know, sometimes, uh, even small things have a huge impact, right? And, and we're talking about our community. Uh, I don't think all of New York will come and visit us because of another art piece, right? So that, that's kind of what was looking at from that angle, right? But I, we have beautiful, including the one we just heard about, beautiful pieces of art, uh, in our, uh, community. And I'd love to see more of that. I'm not afraid of the fee. Uh, uh, if it's reasonable, why not, right? I think we should create such a, a, an art fund. Uh, if you don't have it, then well, it must be frustrating for our commission as an artist, right, to come up with great ideas but have no, have no funds. But I'm also not willing to chip in through the general, general uh, fund. Uh, it's, it just cannot be a priority for the city. I don't think our residents would ever understand that, uh, definitely not if we down the road would have to come, come and, and, and ask for support for a real tax to, to help pay for, for high priority items. Uh, but I, I think there are means, uh, that, and I'm, I'm open to look into what the right balance is and whether it should be for uh, residential and non-residential only and then how high and if there's a limit or not. Uh, I don't think we need the millions. I, I, I think uh, lower amounts would help in our community. That is clear to me. But, but you, you know, our residents and others are not off the hook, right? If, if you want the art and if it is so important to you, there should be plenty of, of, of uh, people willing to donate into a fund, right? And, and, and the community foundation uh, has always had that. Uh, and, and, and they struggle to get donations, right? At least, I don't know if it has changed. Uh, uh, but when I was on the board of community foundation, they tried hard to get donations and it, they didn't just come in big amounts. But if it is important, right, to community and business and others, they would donate to art as well. And, 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 and I don't think we have explored that enough, though, those public, private partnerships with, that we have in other areas too, right? Where, where people have events and, and, and for the senior center, for example, and then donating into a fund on the city to keep certain services up and running. I think, I think we can do more in, in the art sector as well, but it, it, it takes a village to make it happen, right? And, and I don't know if we'll succeed, uh, if we don't have a, a fee in place, right? Uh, but then, uh, Edith also showed another list. Uh, um, I personally, personally, I'm not a fan of yet another study, uh, but I, I think there's other means, uh, whether it's asking for grants and other things that we have been doing anyways, that you can continue, right? And, and just because we ask a fee doesn't mean we should stop everything else. That would help. Uh, so, so let's explore it. Let's do something, uh, and let's not be afraid and just kill it because something might not happen, right?
Don, do we need to take action on it or is it just a, we all agree, stop these to go back and, and do this report for it?
It's just to provide direction. So there's no need for formal action.
Okay. So I think what we're hearing is, is look at all of it. And I think we're all, again, we don't have to prove, we, we'll only approve a certain amount. We may not even approve the percentage fee, but what, that's what we would do. We'd come back, come back. We would all take a look at it, have another discussion and, and then decide what we'd want to narrow that down to.
I mean, I do want to say something.
I'm sorry. Please go ahead. Please.
But yes, I'm totally support this. This is a great idea. It's great for our community. I want staff to come back to us. But I also don't think, actually, I think it's gonna take too long to um, come back to us, that it would affect anything that's being built now. So it would have to have a start date once we figure out whatever it is. And it would probably be, you know, the new developments that are coming in, not implement anything that's already in the pipeline. You can't do that once they've gotten all their permits and everything. So just consider that, please, when you go back. Thank you.
Council member Borzili.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So I'm gonna actually be part of something that you wrote, but um, I, I think the city should develop a dedicated art fund, a percent for art to enhance the city's art program and further Morgan Hill's general plan and goals. Um, and, and really create, be creative in creating a fee-based revenue stream for public art, you know, for our city. I really love, uh, Amanda's comment. If not now, when? If not who? Who then? And, and so your comment about we should have planted this tree twenty-five years ago, so it's a beautiful tree now and it's shade. I, I love that comment. So I, 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 I agree with everybody, but I, you know, one of the experts, I think you're hearing us strongly. Um, go back and, and figure out something. I know you can come back with something, but I think we really need to do it now and figure it out. Because uh, the art that's in our town right now is absolutely beautiful. And, and I thank that lady who did the Morgan statue over there. Uh, I never knew who actually built it and it's actually an honor for her, for me, to see her here. Uh, so it's, it's things like this, that, you know, this is our town. Let's be proud of it. Let's do this art thing. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. So I think staff has direction. They'll know what to do and we appreciate that. Uh, now for any future council initiated agenda items, anybody? Council member Spring?
Yes. So I'd like to have a, a, a agenda item to have a public discussion and, and I'd like to hear from my colleague to really clarify the council's position as it relates to, to uh, our festivals like mushroom, modigua, July fourth and so on, uh, including what are the policies needed to make it happen. So I, I, I sense a lot of confusion and, and disagreements out there. And then some of it is definitely not based uh, on decisions made by this council. Uh, and, and, and I don't know if we have a disconnect between council opinions and, and staff, but I think we need to straighten that out, uh, and fairly quickly to, 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 you know, if I'm the only one who likes those festivals, so be it. But if all five of us like them, let's make them happen and let, let, let's make it clear what needs to happen, that they will continue to happen in our city. Uh, this is, this is not going the right way, it seems. And I'd like to have a discussion on that.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else?
I totally agree with, uh, Councilwoman Spring.
Council member Martinez-Beltan, you have another item?
I do.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, I would like to talk about Viva Cayes and I'll be bringing up some of that next week at our, at our meeting. I've attended Viva Cayes. I have attended in other parts of the world, in Europe, in Mexico, in New York City. Um, and it has now come to San Jose. It's been there for about three or four years, four years, I believe. And it's phenomenal. And I'm completely convinced that this needs to come to Morgan Hill and showcase our wineries and showcase our businesses all throughout Morgan Hill. Um, and so I would love to have that come forward, please.
Okay. You'll provide something in writing. Yep. Very good. Uh, there being none other, we will go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Good night, everyone. Thank you, man.